I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the November 13th, 2017 Issaquah City Council Committee Work Session. It's kind of noisy. I'm Mariah Batista, excused tonight. First item on the agenda, Agenda Bill 7486, Newport Way SR 900 to Southeast 54th Street Good evening. I wanted to step up and just briefly introduce this project because it's been an important endeavor of the city and lots of individuals from multiple teams in the city, not just a public works engineering effort. So before we dive into the details of the presentation, I wanted to acknowledge that magnitude of effort that went into the project thus far. First, we've been working on this for over a year, contemplating conceptual design, but for the last six months most earnestly. And the project has taken over $300,000 of consulting services to pull off and similar value in staff time. We've conducted hours of input, collected that input, considered that input from stakeholders that council has heard from directly and many more whose needs and wants also informed the concept design. So this was a tremendous challenge for the team balancing all of those widely diverse opinions, and I'm proud of the effort that they put into that work. This was also our first pilot project of our Design Construction Engagement Continuum, which we've discussed with you in the past. And the concept is a result of working through that chart we've shown you. And I'm also very proud of the outcome of the concept design that the team and the community have created together. So we're eager not only to present that tonight, but also eager to deliver those improvements to Newport Way. And I know Brianne's going to talk about next steps. We have a few actions that are pending. We have a grant that we've received at least preliminary notice on, and will require some council action some point in the near future. So with that, Brianne.
All right. Thank you very much. So Brianne Ross, Senior Transportation Engineer with Public Works Engineering Department. And with me today, I've got Cecily Asato, who's our Senior Project Manager for our consulting firm, KPG, and then Michael Lappam, our Senior Transportation Planner with our consulting firm. And as Emily said, we're here excitedly to discuss our Newport Way corridor concept. And so the corridor concept has addressed the operational needs of the corridor at about a 10% design level. And so this means that we've considered the roadway cross-section, meaning the lanes, the sidewalks, bike lanes, and the widths, all the different pieces that make up that roadway. And then we've also considered the intersections and how those will be treated. The next phase in design would look at roadway elevations, walls, utilities, future transit, and school bus stop locations and accommodations, and corridor aesthetics. So the purpose of the work session tonight is to introduce you guys to the design report and the findings therein, in consideration of the greater policy question being, shall council support the corridor concept, with the implication being that council would then approve the continued allocation of staff resources towards design and seeking funding for subsequent phases, as we've described in the adopted CIP. So we're here with you guys tonight, and then again, following up with Council Infrastructure Committee on Thursday, and then back for consideration, we hope, on December 4th. So tonight, we'll be covering these topics, being the goals and the process, getting into the traffic a bit, and then the details of the preferred concept. So our project goals were developed in collaboration with the residents at the first couple workshops we did. They centered around bicyclists, pedestrians, vehicle access, traffic, and the corridor character. And specifically in thinking about corridor character, what we heard was the desire to minimize the roadway width and reduce impact to the hillside, the existing trees, our neighbors' backyards, and reducing the need to purchase private property. So I know that this gets a little bit hard to read, so you've got slightly larger copies in front of you. But as Emily mentioned, this is our first project in our pilot public engagement process. And we've had five meetings with the public in about five months, so we've been busy. The first time we met with the public was the first of our two workshops. We had a two-series workshops where we encouraged attendees to attend both workshops. And the goal was to receive input from the community, hear their concerns, hear their desires for the corridor. And the main concerns that we heard were the desire to improve bicyclists and pedestrian facilities, improve neighborhood access, look at traffic and the impacts, and also looked at connecting those residents to the transit center in a more efficient way. So during those workshops, we also discussed the pros and cons of potential corridor solutions, including a couple different cross-sections, and intersection controls, pedestrian facilities, and then multimodal corridors and what those can look like. So then in the second workshop, we took all that input that we received in the first and came up with a couple different alternatives. And so we discussed those couple different alternatives for the cross-sections, and also looking at alternatives for intersection control at all the different access points along the corridor. And the community, it seems like, was generally pleased with the progress that we had made to address their concerns about safety and access and connectivity. We had one week in between those two workshops, so you know, we had gone to that first workshop with a fairly open blank slate, and then, you know, turn around a week later and come up with some sketches of what this could turn into. As a whole, the community supported the three-lane roadway section for Newport Way with a shared-use trail on the north side to complete the Mountains to Sound Trail. The thing that we also heard at that second workshop was some desire for additional information about the developers that were coming in on Newport Way. And so in response to that, we held a third meeting, and that we opened up not only to those that attended the first two, but to the community as a whole. And we looked at discussing the permit process to help people better understand how the developments were being permitted and at what phase in the permit process they were in, and then also started to really dive into the details of the corridor improvements that the developers were making, namely the roundabout. And so what was presented that night was the developer's second attempt at a roundabout design. And we heard fairly unanimously from the public that they weren't really happy with that design. And so that design had some turn restrictions placed on it based on the roundabout location, and it had some impacts to the corridor. And as a result, we then took on the task, our design firm, of coming up with a roundabout design that we thought would help the corridor function better and reduce impacts onto the neighbors. And we did that. And then we went back out to the public and shared that new roundabout design at our barbecue. And it was well-received. People understood that we had minimized impacts as much as possible, provided as many benefits to the community as possible, and we had folks vote as they left, and we had general support for that roundabout. So after that barbecue, we kind of got out of that singular roundabout topic and went back to our corridor work. And we took some of the alternatives that we had discussed early on in the first couple workshops and met with every department in the city, including East Side Fire and Rescue, Sound Transit, King County Metro, Mountains to Sound Greenway, Washita, City Bellevue, to look at how things were going on either outside of our borders. And based on all those discussions, we now have the preferred concept that you guys see in your design reports. So that design or that preferred concept, we then presented to the public in October. And overall, the public appreciated where we were at and said that we were headed in the right direction. We did hear some feedback that they'd like to consider additional types of pedestrian crossing treatments, and those are definitely things we will continue to look at in final And then it's not over. So we have this ongoing communication. So as we have left this planning stage and we're getting into this design stage, we continue to correspond with the residents. There's email correspondence that goes back and forth, some of which I know that you guys have received lately. And those comments that we receive kind of fall into two categories. We have the category of comments that we receive and we consider and we evaluate, but we decide that they're not in alignment with our project goals, and they're not recommended for the design report. So examples of that are four-way stops on the corridor or traffic signals on the corridor. So and we'll talk more about the reasoning behind that as we get on in the presentation. The other kind of category that these comments fall into are those more fine-tuned detail type comments that we will absolutely continue to consider as we get into design and the next phases of that design. But at this point in this corridor concept, it's not quite the time to consider those. Examples of those being like the driveway widths, or what plantings should go where based on site distance, or impacts to specific existing trees. Those are all things that we'll continue to look at as we move forward in the design process. So as we're on this continuum, we, as I said, will continue to consider these fine-tuned details and engage in this email-type correspondence. But we're not going to continue to replicate this heavy, once-a-month-type public meeting process. And the details that we start to get into now are much more into engineering judgment, following standards and codes. So we absolutely take the public's thoughts into consideration, but we also have to follow the rules that we're upheld to. So we will continue to share design with both public and council at major milestones. This can be done via email, updating our website, and then potentially another public meeting or two as we get closer out. There's certainly opportunities to consider things like the corridor aesthetics, as well as update on schedule and potential construction impacts as we start to get closer to that. So this is the feedback that we received from our open house. This is based on stickers that residents were given as they were leaving our meeting. And so the consensus, I think, is that the city is heading in the right direction and that there is support for the concept as a whole. So now I'm going to introduce it to Cecily and Michael, and they're going to start to get into some of these details.
Yeah, excuse me. We started our traffic analysis by analyzing existing conditions in the corridor. It's a two-lane roadway, and the intersections are controlled by stop signs on the side streets. Newport Way is classified as a minor arterial and carries approximately 10,000 vehicles each weekday. And from our analysis and talking to local residents, it can be pretty challenging. Yes, please.
I was just going to ask you a question. We're not, most of us aren't familiar with the traffic classification, so serves almost 10,000 vehicles per day is the actual condition. What is a two-lane road designed for? Is that the, is that overcapacity at capacity?
That's on the upper limit of a two-lane roadway. A two-lane roadway, you know, depends on a lot of factors. That's on the upper limits of what a two-lane roadway typically would carry. And that kind of leads to the third bullet point, is that during the busy travel times, during the morning commute and during the afternoon commute, particularly when someone wants to maybe make a left turn from Newport Way to a side street, they could often have traffic backup behind them while they wait for a gap in traffic. So that's, it's on the upper limit of what a two-lane roadway typically carries. So we moved on from our existing conditions analysis, and we analyzed 2040 traffic conditions, 23 years into the future. And the main takeaway from our 2040 analysis is that our three-lane preferred cross-section can accommodate the growth we're expecting in traffic along the corridor. We're going to add center-left turn lane, which is, we're going from two lanes to three lanes, and the additional lane will be basically a center-left turn lane. And that's going to help drivers access, make left turns in and out of the properties. And at locations where we don't have a need to provide access to driveways or side streets, we'll be installing center median, and this is going to provide traffic calming to moderate the speeds along the corridor.
So as Brianne mentioned, this has been a concerted effort with the community, different departments, and additional stakeholders. Preferred concept is a result of many of these conversations with them, and the goal was to balance all the priorities of everyone we've met. So the top priorities we heard from the community were traffic calming and changing the character of the road to make it more of a neighborhood feel, less of a cut-through route. It was improved access to the neighborhoods. People were having a hard time getting in and out of their side streets. We wanted to better the pedestrian facilities along the corridor, which means providing access on both sides of the roadway. And then we want to preserve the natural environment as much as possible, so not take down any more trees or, you know, encroach into any more critical areas. So that's what we heard from the community overall in a big broad stroke. From the East Side Fire and PWO, we heard the main thing was access during events of emergency. So, you know, eliminating center medians or creating gaps in the medians for access was our main thing to get through to where the emergency needed to be serviced. They talked about no large plantings within the medians, just for maintenance issues or items, and they favored on-street bike facilities to provide that better width to bypass cars. So again, it's another group of people that we've heard from. The last group that we heard from was from Parks and DSD, and we heard that, you know, we want to provide and continue the Mountains to Sound Trail through Bellevue, through the city, make it continuous, and have that nice circulation throughout the city. We wanted wide sidewalk facilities on both sides of the roadway to have that enhanced pedestrian feel throughout the corridor. And then we want to adjust the central Issaquah plan as needed to meet those needs and to preserve the natural feel of the corridor as much as possible. So just from these three groups, we pulled out all their priorities and tried to, you know, create the best alternative as possible. And this is what you see here today. So based on the input of these groups and the community means we've had and the balanced goals and priorities we heard, we provided a 12-foot multipurpose trail on the north side, because it turns out Bellevue is actually wiring their Mountains to Sound Greenway to be a 12-foot-wide regional trail. We have a new sidewalk on the south side of the road, which provides residents continuous access throughout the corridor without having to cross the street. We have no median east of the REVA development and the King County trailhead, and this preserves that natural environment, the trees. It also provides a little wider area for, sorry, excuse me, East Side Fire and Rescue get through. We have a raised intersection treatment on medians to help change the character of the corridor, to make it into more of a neighborhood feel. And then, as Michael will talk about, we have turn lanes that we've added to get into and out of neighborhoods a little easier with flying Ts to also help with that access. The concept also included a new continuous roadway lighting that they're proposing and formal drainage system, a drainage conveyance system, because right now, all that we have is ditches. And that will help with, you know, drain the roadway, helping alleviate the ice buildup. And as this project moves forward into final design, design elements such as roadway plantings, channelization, driveway widths, all the really details will be fleshed out as we move forward.
Yeah, like Cecily mentioned, we have identified intersection treatments all along the corridor for each location to enhance vehicle access, comb traffic, and help facilitate pedestrian crossings of Newport Way. We also looked, in addition, we also looked at many different intersection treatments, including roundabouts, potentially adding signals, or potentially adding always stops along the corridor. We are having one roundabout go in that the developer is designing from the Gateway Apartments that also provides the main access to Spyglass Neighborhood. We did look at potential roundabouts at the rest of the intersections along the corridor, but these were not selected for roundabouts due to steep grades, the topography, and spatial constraints. Where it installs a roundabout, we'd be impacting properties and people's houses. We also looked at traffic signals. Traffic signals were not selected at any of the intersections due to low traffic volumes on the side streets. There's, did not meet, there's something called traffic signal warrants, and none of the intersections met these warrants. Warrants are federal guidelines that determine when it's appropriate and when it's not appropriate to install a traffic signal at an intersection. There are issues installing a traffic signal at a location that does not meet the warrants. It increases the delay of the main street, and stopping the main flow of traffic may lead to an increase in rear-end collisions. In addition, traffic signals are also pretty expensive to construct as well as maintain. Again, we looked at always stops as well. None of the intersection in the corridor meet the always-stop warrant, again, because the side street volumes are too low, and in this case, along Newport Way, an always-stop would lead to congestion along Newport Way. So one of the treatments we are looking at, we have seven intersections along the corridor today with new development. That's going to get increased likely to nine, what we're expecting new development to happen. And what we have here is a treatment that can only be used for a three-legged intersection, and we're looking at this treatment at three locations. It's called a flying T, and what it does is help left turn access into and out of side streets. And how it does that is, this isn't showing up that great. Just a second, I'm just, pretty washed out here. I don't know if you guys have a handout. Do they have a handout for the presentation? You don't? Well, what you got, you can't really see here as well, and this is kind of point a little bit. So when you're making a left turn, whenever you're accessing a side street, the most difficult movement-
You have to make sure that you're talking into the microphone.
Can't do both. So the most difficult movement at an intersection is a left out of a side street, and that's because you have to yield to both directions of traffic. Making a left from the main flow of traffic, you only have to yield to one direction of traffic. So what a flying T does is it allows you to have a center refuge/median, center refuge/ acceleration lane, where you can pull into, so you'd first yield to westbound traffic, pull into the refuge island, and it also can accelerate, and then you could find, you make a second phase of your left turn by just finding a gap in eastbound or westbound traffic. So you can kind of do it in two phases. So it makes it quite a bit easier than trying to find a gap in both directions, which can be particularly challenging, you know, during the busy commute periods. Oh, and lastly, up here, you can see a successful example of a flying T. This is at Montreux, the main Montreux entrance, and this is the intersection just to the west of 54th.
So the other options we're looking at is a raised intersection. Knowing that we do want to change the corridor, the character, knowing that we want to change the character of the corridor, slow speeds down, we've already set the tone with the first roundabout that's going in. It'll help meter traffic. By adding raised intersections, you'll further add that tone of like you have a slowing down, and heads up, you're going into a neighborhood community. So these are some examples that, around the region, actually around the northwest, of raised intersections. Raised intersections are basically a traffic calming treatment. It raises the road to the same level of the sidewalk. The change in pavement texture, color, and surface indicates to drivers that they're entering a slow zone. It feels like a plaza space that you're entering. The pedestrians are also at the same level as the car for even better visibility. You can add ballards with lights or do inlays around the corner for also added visibility. Some other areas that we are going to be putting in a raised intersection would be at the Pine Cone Drive, which we'll talk about later on, and then the King County trailhead across, near REVA. Some other local examples, if you're curious about raised intersections in this region, is Second and Main in Renton. It's very similar volumes. Second Street between Athens and Cascade Avenue in Langley, and then Leary and Cleveland Street in Redmond. Those are all examples that are very similar. It's a little bit more urban, has higher, about 10,000 to 14,000 cars passing through. So if you want to go and take a local look, that's why I recommend you take a look at that.
Yeah, for our traffic analysis, we analyzed how well the intersections are performing along the corridor, and to do that, we use intersection level service and delay. And the first column there on the left lists the intersection ratings A through F, A being when there's very minor delays, and F being substantial congestion in the corridor. The second column is for unsignalized intersections, what the rating is for delay, and this is based on, for unsignalized, it's just for the stop-controlled side legs where the delay is measured. So here you can see 0 to 10 is A, and so on. The last column here is a signalized intersection. This measures the average delay for all vehicles going through the intersection. And the city of Issaquah has an adopted level service standard of D. So an unsignalized intersection, that would mean delay of 25 to 35 seconds for the side street. And for a signalized intersection, the only signalized one we have in the corridor is SR 900, so the 35 to 55 seconds delay would be what the city standard represents there. So here we're showing the table of the existing intersection level service of our study intersections along the corridor. The column on the left lists the study intersections between 54th and 900. The second column shows the traffic control. Again, the majority of them are stop sign controlled for the side streets. And we see, the third column is the morning peak hour, which typically occurs between 7:30 and 8:30 in the morning. And then the afternoon peak hour is the last column, and that's roughly between 5:00 and 6:00 in the afternoon. And the main takeaway here is that all the intersections are meeting the city's level service standard of D or better. Oh, and also, I'd love to point out here, too, that the SR 900 signal is owned and operated by Washington State DOT. So we went from existing, we took a look out 23 years again in the future, including all the land use growth we're expecting on the corridor, within the city, and even regional traffic is going to expect to be increasing over the next 23 years or so. We now got two new intersections over there for the new developments. We've got the, let's see, yeah, okay. Well, we now got new intersections there, and we've got two future timeframes we're looking at. We have baseline conditions, which is the second and third columns, and then the last two columns are with the project improvements. And I want to call out that the baseline assumes the improvements made by new developments. For example, the developments would construct the new roundabout at the Gateway Apartments/ Spyglass entrance. So looking at the baseline conditions, the 54th Street intersection is expected to degrade by 2040, and without improvements, we're expecting that intersection to break down and operate at level service F. Similarly, with the traffic growth out there, we're also expecting the 900 intersection to break down in the afternoon and also perform at F. With the project improvements, the fourth column lists each intersection treatments that have been identified for the study intersections as far as roundabouts, flying Ts, left turn lanes, et cetera. And with the project improvements, we're expecting all of our study intersections to operate at level service D or better, with the one exception of SR 900, which is expected to operate at level service E. And the city has a separate project to improve capacity on 900 that has traffic increase in the corridor. They could look at possibly implementing that to bring that intersection back to D as well.
Just going to run you through the different preferred concepts as we go through the corridor. As Michael mentioned, we'll have nine intersections when we're all said and done with development that's coming through. The first one is at 54th, where we're introducing the flying T. It's a two-step maneuver, so it helps with access, is what we heard was the main point of, one of the priorities we heard from the community is accessing through here. It helps also with site distance, because around that curve, cars are coming pretty quickly, and by having that two-step movement, you can maneuver safely into traffic. This is what it could potentially look like in the future. You can see the little acceleration lane/protected left. And then we have the Gateway Senior Housing. The developer's putting this in, and we would propose a flying T concept here as well for access. And then we have the Pine Cone Drive. We've formalized this into a four-way intersection to help future developments access whatever develops up at the north side of Pine Cone Drive. This is the first raised intersection that we proposed for the corridor. It sets the tone that you are entering the neighborhood corridor. This is where actually the bulk of the driveways start to begin through here. So raised intersection, you can also do some kind of gateway treatment or some kind of art. This is also what it could put- This is also what it could potentially look like. If you see the change in pavement and surface materials and the pedestrian item. And then the development for Gateway is putting in the roundabout for circulation, also metering traffic, keeping it at that lower speed. And this is also a rendering of what it could look like when they're done, with the bicycles riding on the wide sidewalks where bicyclists enter the roundabout on top of the sidewalk and then they exit in a bike lane. Then we have the Pacific Elm Drive. And this is not really changing from what it is today, except we're just taking out that little pork chop-like island, Sea Caribbean, the left turn, so people can't take a left into Mamish Point, or excuse me, Bi Glass.
Thank you.
And we're also providing a left turn into, I'm just blanking all over the place, Mamish Point, sorry about that. And then at Oak Crest, we are providing dual left turn lanes to access both neighborhoods. This is what it could potentially look like in the future. And then we are introducing a crosswalk at the new trailhead for King County right across from Reva. This is another raised intersection with the new developments coming through, the trailhead, people coming to use the trail. We thought this is an appropriate place to prioritize pedestrians over cars. So as you notice, we aren't showing a left-hand receiving, it's not a flying T, we're not doing a receiving lane for that because we want to prioritize pedestrians in this area. This is also what it could look like in the future with the refuge island and the raised intersection. Then at the Bergsma Access, we are providing a two-way left turn lane for access to both the north and the south. And then at SR 900, we have a little bit more work to do here. Again, as Michael says, coordinating with WashDOT, taking a look at the channelization, looking at access to the driveways on either side of the road. This one needs to be fleshed out in further detail as we get towards the final design.
And as Emily mentioned, we, you all authorized us to apply for a grant a month or two ago, and we did that. And the great news is that we've been notified that we have been recommended for funding for that grant. So there is $1.5 million towards design that we are expected to receive. It's still going through the PSRC process, but it's expected that we'd receive that in February. So I should mention, we did apply for $2.5 million, but our project was the last project on the list to be funded in 2018. And so there was 1.5 remaining for us for use. With that, do you guys have any questions?
Thanks, Brianna, that was really good. So there were some citizen comment letters today that talked about either existing driveways or existing roads that connected into Newport Way and that entries or aprons would be reduced. I was just wondering, since one side of the, the south side of Newport Way is suburban zoning and the north side is urban zoning, do we apply urban standards to both sides? And is that why driveways are changing shape or entrances to neighborhoods are changing shape?
So the only entrance changing shape, well, I guess there's two that I know of, one of which being here. So there used to be three driveways for this area, and we're looking at providing two. There is a common ownership there, and it is something that we've met with and discussed with the property owner. And then the other one being at Oak Crest, there we go. So Oak Crest has some on-street parking. And so this is just simply a schematic of what it might look like to reduce that crossing width there and designate where parking should be so we don't get parking too close to the intersection. All of these still have to be looked at with turning templates and other items in final design. So this is still that conceptual level of design.
So even though the zoning is different on two sides of the street, the street standards are consistent on both sides of the street.
Yeah, we've not applied different standards.
Great, thanks.
Questions? I've forgotten if you talked about it in the beginning, sorry, the process from here.
Mm-hmm. So what happens next? Yeah. So we, as far as council specifically?
Yes.
Yes. So we will be discussing Newport at CIC on Thursday, and then it comes back to council for consideration on the first council meeting in December. The agenda bill asks for you to approve the corridor concept as it's described in the design report. With the alternatives being, the first, I guess, alternative being that if you don't approve the recommended corridor concept, you could continue to fund the project. And we would, at that point, consider what we should do with the level of planning effort that's been done to date. The other option would be to not approve the corridor concept and not continue funding, in which case the design report would get shelved and could potentially be revitalized at a future date should council determine that's a priority.
There was an estimate in there, and I wondered, a total construction cost or designing construction cost, I wonder how that differed from the estimate that we used in the bond package a year ago?
Yeah. So the estimate in the bond package a year ago had, did not completely include exactly what we have because we didn't have a corridor concept at that time. So we have a lot more detail about what we're looking at. The other major consideration is that construction prices have gone up a lot. We've seen a raise in 20% to 30% in one year. And so that's certainly affected the prices that are listed. And then we also looked at applying not that dramatic of an inflation rate, but looking at an inflation rate, knowing that we're not under construction right now. So that's kind of the differences between-
Was it in the mid-20s last, in the bond package?
Yeah, 22.
22, okay.
Roughly.
And then one more question had to do with, some of the letters we received today had, like you said, very detailed questions that probably would be reviewed at a higher level of design phase.
Yeah.
What's the format then for responding to that? Is that something, you just carry those questions along with the project? And as you hit a certain design phase, you get back with property owners or HOAs and talk about those? Or how do we follow up on questions that just got received today?
Right. So my plan was to respond to those emails and giving the details that we know now that, you know, can certainly apply to some of those comments. And some of those comments that would be looked at in future design, yes, it would be to hold on to those. And as we get into the next steps of design, consider those, continue to consider those. And then as we continue to report back out and communicate with the folks that we received those comments about.
That's great, thanks.
Yes. Thank you. I think we've had a good public process here.
Yeah.
And contractors have done, consultants have done a good job. We've got, you know, better than previously, so I like how we've, thank you, sorry. So I like how we have added that to it. And I think the neighborhoods probably felt more heard than previously, so that's really good. I have a concern with one issue here, and that's basically getting down to where we're sitting on with Vision Zero, which we haven't adopted, but it's moving towards a lot of uses in this area. And the bike, bicycle lanes as set up to make this be, this being the Mountains of Sound Trail. It is the east-west path across our city. And the first piece of it there, we're really trying to build out to, it's going to be, you know, whatever we build here will be good for 50-plus years, right? And looking to make that a little more, and on the innovative side, on what's really coming in the future versus our standard main uses. And I'm getting down to the point of protected bicycle lanes. I brought this up in the beginning. I think that's a very important piece of this. The neighborhoods would definitely represent at those public meetings. I don't think we got really good bicycle groups at those meetings. I know it was attempted, but they weren't there. And so that future reach of what we can do for bicycles, I think is important. I don't, in my mind, the multi-use trail is not really a bicycle trail that's for commuters and that's more for other uses of bicycles. And I'm really looking to see how we could get a protected bike lane. I know the biggest issue of space and keeping the use of, or the width for emergency vehicles, but I think there's some room in here to work with that. So I'm going to really push to see how we can add protected bike lanes into this concept before I would want to go forward with it. So that's it. And then just a quick question, the other thing you said, the cost of the design of this, you're talking about a one and a half million dollar grant, yes, for 2.5. What is the anticipated basic cost just to get the concept, you know, the final planning done?
We're looking at roughly three and a half million for design, and that starts the right-of-way process, and it does not include the price of purchasing the right-of-way, of, you know, the actual purchasing easements and right-of-way, but looks at the cost estimates and prepares those right-of-way documents.
Okay, so the one and a half million still leaves us a couple million dollars short on that, that's what I'm trying.
Yep.
And then I guess I didn't see that the cost at this point is different than the 22 million. What was that, again, the updated cost for construction?
So, yeah, the cost for construction, or the project cost identified with the transportation bond measure a couple of years ago that was looked at was in that mid-20 range. And so the cost estimate we're looking at now has increased, and that's based on the added information that we have and raise in prices.
Did you have a number on that? I didn't see it handily.
It's in the appendix of the design report.
Do you know it just for the public audience versus looking it up?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, all right, thank you.
Okay, so anymore, so we're in the, we're in the questions phase here at our meeting. And then we will go to public comment, and then we will come back to council members to provide feedback and comments to the administration. Any other questions, Paul?
Brianna, earlier, well, someone mentioned talking to all the stakeholders. You mentioned Eastside Fire and Rescue.
Yeah.
And in your comments, you specifically relayed something that they said about the bike lanes actually being with the full travel lanes. Did I hear that correctly? Could you revisit that and explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, absolutely. So when we met with Eastside Fire and Rescue, we were considering two different alternatives, one of which had the on-street bike lanes and one of them which took the bike lanes off of the road. And the Eastside Fire and Rescue had a very strong preference for having the on-street bike lanes because they looked at it where currently you can see there's 17 feet there of roadway width. So if there was an emergency and they needed to get access, the public could, the drivers could pull over into that bike lane, and Eastside Fire and Rescue and our police department as well could still get by. So we don't have a lot of three-lane roadways in our area with center medians, landscape medians, that don't have bike lanes. And that's part of the reason, is it has a large benefit for them to provide maintenance, for our maintenance folks to have maintenance, and then also Eastside Fire Rescue and our police department to gain access.
So when you said take them off?
Yes.
Would you just get rid of them entirely?
No, no. So we looked at, instead of having the bike lanes on the road, we looked at having them on the, we had two 12-foot multi-use paths, one on the south side and one on the north side. So taking that width that we had in the roadway and putting it and separating those bicyclists from vehicles in that way. And Eastside Fire and Rescue did not support that concept.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, moving on to public comment.
Great.
I'm guessing we have a number of folks here who might have comments on this agenda bill. And we have a very long agenda tonight, so I'm going to ask two things. One, I would ask you to try to keep your comments to three minutes, which is typical for a committee, somewhere between three and five. And we have a late meeting tonight, so I would ask you to stick to three minutes, please, if you can. And the second is, if somebody before you has already made the point you want to make, I would ask you to be mindful of that and maybe just say, if you really feel the need to come up and say you agree with the point, maybe summarize, just because we're trying to manage our meeting and otherwise we'll go very late. So who would like to start? Hart?
My name is Hart Schergman, and I live at 2550 Northwest Oak Crest Drive. And I've been a resident of Issaquah for over 21 years. I want to start by thanking the city and staff for hosting and coordinating all these workshops. They're very beneficial. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of a number of residents in the Summer Hill subdivision. And rather than each of us coming up to speak and taking five minutes, I'll talk on behalf of them as a collective, concerns regarding the design proposal. Newport Way within the city limits stretches from Front Street on the east to Lake Mont Boulevard on the west, consisting of 19 intersections. Seven of the intersections are signalized and 12 have stop signs. What is interesting to note is the seven signalized intersections are four-way intersections, and the 12 stop signs are T intersections. Tonight, I want to address the concerns related to specific intersection of this design proposal, and that is the intersection of Northwest Oak Crest Drive and Newport Way. This is a T intersection, which will become a four-way intersection once the Reva Town Homes, which is a 36-unit townhome development, breaks ground. And yes, this becomes a four-way intersection as soon as the ground is broken and construction begins with the removal of all the trees and excavation of the land. The proposed widening of Newport Way and reshaping of the roadway will have a significant impact on the neighborhood of 55 homes. Currently, we have our challenges when trying to exit our street during certain times of day, especially when there's a constant flow of traffic. Putting a roadway directly opposite Oak Crest Drive for Reva would therefore increase the vehicular traffic at this intersection and will create an even greater challenge when opposing vehicles are trying to exit at the same time during a short break in traffic. Well, will I go first or will they go first? Who will go first? As cars face each other, they try to exit the roadway simultaneously. For many years, we have fought for reducing the speed limit along Newport Way at the specific location. Adding a left turn lane on Newport Way for Reva and Summer Hill will only allow the throughput lanes to speed by while increasing the wait time for us to exit our neighborhoods as we try to wait for a break in traffic. Additionally, the proposed widening of Newport Way will only push us further back from the intersection as the curve of the roadway to the west becomes more pronounced, further reducing our already limited sightlines as the slope of the terrain will be modified. This drawing does not adequately show the curve of the road to the west. The Newport Way corridor drawing illustrates a series of trees along the five-foot landscape buffer on the south side of Newport Way, just west of Oak Crest Drive. These trees are in direct line of sight of motorists trying to exit Summer Hill subdivision. Low-level plantings would be fine, but tree trunks and foliage will block our view of eastbound vehicles approaching Oak Crest Drive. And no trees should be on the south side, east of Newport Way either, as the sightlines will be obstructed for clear views of the east lane of traffic to Newport Way. Going forward, sorry, going back to my first set of statistics, there are 19 intersections along Newport Way. This will be the first, the first four-way intersection not to have a traffic signal. While it might not warrant a signalized intersection, it most certainly requires a four-way stop sign. We suggest that Newport Way remain a two-lane roadway and allow cars to safely make their turning maneuvers at this four-way stop sign. We also oppose the narrowing of the entry to Oak Crest Drive as vehicles turning into Summer Hill require the current turning radius. The proposed design will restrict the ingress and egress of our neighborhood, especially for large trucks, garbage trucks, UPS truck, the snowplows, street sweepers, et cetera, as they need to access Oak Crest as a city street, not a private roadway as Reva and Mamish Point or Gateway. And we are not discussing the pedestrian crosswalk, as we understand the crosswalk will move closer to the east to the trailhead. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next.
Someday, we're going to have a pedestrian bicycle bridge across Maple connecting with Newport. Just want to make sure that we have some idea where that, because it comes across, the creek is lower, there's a grade issue, that's why we don't ever, we don't- creek is lower, there's a grade issue, that's why we don't ever, we don't have a road proposed across there, but we can have a bicycle pedestrian. We potentially, and I imagine in the future, will have a lot more people having to park or come by bus to the transit center, going across Maple and entering Cougar Mountain. The 40, 40 cars that are going to be allowed to park in the new trailhead at the Big Tree Ridge is not going to be adequate for very long, and there's not a whole bunch of expansion that they can do. And then we're going to have people trying to park in the neighborhoods, especially Summerhill, because there's not going to be any parking along on Newport itself. So let's make sure we, you know, people are going to have to learn that that's going to fill up. Neighborhood parking is not a good idea. If they can park at the transit center, which has got a lot of capacity on weekends and even in those nice summer afternoons, it's not very far to get to the basic Cougar Mountain across Newport, or Maple. And crossing Maple, even at grade, is a whole bunch safer than trying to cross at Newport, which is a crazy intersection. So just something to think about in how we design.
Thank you. Other folks, Tina?
Hi, my name is Tina Conforti, and I live on 1220 Oakwood Place, northwest Issaquah. I'd just like to thank you for your time that you take, and I'd like to address to all of you the importance of the safety on a road. I don't think the figure concerning our road, it shows the curve of Newport Way, and the important areas to keep us safe getting in and out of our road. It's not to beautify the road. I don't care if there's the trees and there is a medium session. What I really care is to keep everyone safe. We don't want to see any more people killed on the sidewalk. We had a couple experience already, one a little boy and dogs. So my main importance, address two areas. Before you make a decision, think about the safety first. We want to be safe. We don't care about a beautified street. We need to be safe on a road. Thank you.
Thank you. Other people like to speak? No? Okay.
My name is Geraldine Carey, and I live at 955 Seventeenth Avenue, northwest Issaquah. I've lived here 40 years, seen a lot of change, and I don't like the change I see now. It horrifies me as a resident who lives on Newport Way, because I think that with the design of this road, you're going to make it mostly for traffic that goes through the town. You're not making it safe for the people who live on the streets, and I think you'll see a lot of T-bones and everything once you build this road, because you're not thinking about how these intersections impact the residents. And believe me, I, I just think you're, you know, you're creating a death trap by making them wider, putting more trees, and, you know, all sorts of, you know, not only do they have to, we have to look out for pedestrians, bicycles, cars, and turning lanes. And that's not fair to the people who live on Newport Way. We've lived here long, and we like our neighborhood, and we don't want to enter a situation where every time we go out or try to get home, it becomes a death potential. I mean, I think you need to really seriously look at this, go out there, and see how the roads impact the residents, not how you're going to get from SR 900 to Lakemont, because if you're in, as a resident, trying to get out of your driveway, it's going to be a real danger. Thank you for having all the meetings. And my other comment would be, you know, the consultants did a really good job of listening to us, but what happened was, we had a lot of issues that were not addressed. They were heard and addressed at the meeting, but when it came time to put it down on paper, they were not materialized. And I think you need to go back and say, what were these concerns? How do they affect the residents? You know, I mean, this is going to be a serious impact to our neighborhood, and I think you ought to do it right or not do it at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yep.
My name is Joe Werner. I live at 1230 Oakwood Place in the Summerhill subdivision. Could you put that slide up for me, please, at Oakcrest?
Absolutely.
In the consultant's presentation, I heard the phrase several times, actually, two phrases. One, moving traffic along on Newport Way. And two, not causing backups on Newport Way. So I walk away from that conversation saying, oh, Newport Way is the city's way of saying, that's just a traffic place. Who cares about the residents? And I'm tired of the city not thinking of us as a residential area. So I would ask you to give serious thought to traffic controls. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this agenda bill? No? Last call? Okay, thank you. So, back to council and feedback, comments. Staff, this agenda bill?
Brian, I just wanted to talk about some of the stuff that I saw in the design that I, that I really liked, and I credit you and your team for fitting these items in. Improved bike pad connections, having bike ways on the road as well as a multipurpose trail, and the Mountains to Sound Greenway connection that's being made, and hopefully Bellevue section will be done in a similar timeframe. The raised crosswalks seem to me to be something that we've been looking to do in urban areas, and this in the past has been considered a rural part of Issaquah with a rural road design, but it is going to be urban, and so I think the raised crosswalks were good. I was excited to see the possibility of a major neighborhood project south of I-90. We've done a lot of work in other parts of town, but this, this area, especially with the four developments plus the anti-aircraft creek project, so much happening in a four-to-five year span. It's good to see that this corridor study was prioritized and put up top. The engagement process seemed much more vigorous this time, and, you know, we have people here tonight who still want some additional changes, but I do believe you ran a really great process this time. I liked it a lot. The use of grants to subsidize some of the project costs, always helpful. And I think, the last piece I wanted to talk about was, it's hard when you're converting from a rural cross-section to an urban cross-section, but I think the residents that came tonight for sure at least spoke about their concern that we want to make sure that we prioritize the neighborhood movement as the most important movement versus the pass-through, and I think that's important. I don't have any particular comments. I'm interested to see your answers to the question sets they had, but I think it's definitely the council's will, that this is one of our important neighborhoods, and we want to make sure that they feel that they have the appropriate access, that they need to either drive or walk or bike into town. And so maybe during final design, some of these extra things that they've been asking for would get considered and would be good, but that is a huge, huge priority, I think, for most of the council, that we really prioritize the neighborhood's access in this area. Thank you for all your work. It's really good.
Thank you. Other comments? So, Mary Lou beat me to it, the, this is, you've been really busy.
Yes, we have.
Working on this.
Yeah.
And, and I too can see the fruits of those labors, and I'm impressed by the concept overall. One of my questions would be how, what I would like to see, not in terms of design changes at this point, or concept changes at this point, would be some responses to the, the letters that, the emails that we've gotten, and also to the comments that we've heard tonight. I don't know if that maybe is best presented at infrastructure. It's just a thought, I don't run the committee, but it's just a thought, a way of getting that out there in advance to the council and the public before it comes back to the full council. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Agenda Bill 7491, 2018 Legislative Agenda, presented by Bob Harrison and Doug Levy, our lobbyist.
Good evening. So Doug Levy is with us from Outcomes by Levy, he's our Government Affairs Specialist. Yep, you can sit there. And I'll pull up in a moment the Legislative Agenda for 2018, and your packets were kind of the year-end report of the 2017 Legislative Agenda for your reading and the outcomes of that, and then we have the 2018 Agenda here this evening. So with that, I'll turn it over to Doug and pull up the document.
Good evening. Good to see you all. And the traffic signals in Issaquah, some are on and some are not, so it's been an interesting drive over. So for purposes of tonight and your time, we have a 2018 Legislative Agenda, and we were going to focus primarily on this first page, which gets into some Issaquah-specific priorities we're going to be recommending. The second page of this document gets into some things like affordable housing, homelessness, safe streets, basic law enforcement academy money, protecting your revenue capacity, protecting local rights of way on the small cell issue that's pending in the legislature. Happy to take your questions about that, but we wanted to concentrate time on the things that are more specific to the city for purposes of tonight. And then there's also a garden variety of other things on the last couple pages. So I don't want to dissuade you from asking questions on any and all of it, but for purposes of briefing you, we'll go through this first page. So the first item that we put here is that the notion of continuing to push for enactment of a capital budget. You remember that in the 2017 sessions of the legislature, there were votes on and negotiations on capital budgets. Unto themselves, they're basically agreed upon, but one particular caucus tied passage of the capital budget to passage of a water rights bill called the Hearst Bill, and so we don't have a final capital budget. So that leaves some money that was allocated for confluence, a good deal of money that was allocated for Lakes and Amish State Park, sort of sitting there inactive, if you will. And so the idea of getting the capital budget enacted and those dollars approved and moving is on the list here. Transportation, there were several good things that occurred during the 2017 sessions. The money for Interstate 90 and State Route 18 was moved up by six years. We got a million and a half dollars for some work at SR 912. Still, we thought it was appropriate in your agenda to remind the legislative delegation that there are still a number of needs, and that there are still these regional roadway networks with Issaquah-Hobart Road as kind of Exhibit A, where we would like to see funding and tools made available. And we've also put forward the idea of protecting some of the gains that we got in the, in the 2018 session, or, excuse me, 2017 sessions. So we've listed that out.
Okay, Doug, can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Transportation piece? So it's kind of hard from where we sit to picture how all the buckets of money get spent on little bits and pieces of the network and where the priority is. So a couple of things that were surprising was the May Valley SR 900 roundabout, and how, what problem is it solving? Who does it benefit? What is the timeframe? But also, looking at the interchange for I-90 and SR-18, but not hearing about Highway 18 itself getting fixed. So how do we get a better picture of all of those pieces, since they have such a dramatic impact on Issaquah?
So in the Connecting Washington package, the legislature focuses on, on their list, they focus on things that are directly related to the state routes. So that's one area where, you know, there's a gap, frankly, because the state does state routes, and they do some grant funding and money for agencies like the Transportation Improvement Board that grant money for local roadways, but there's a gap on the regional systems like Issaquah-Hobart, so that's one thing I mentioned to you.
Let me ask it a little more specifically. So what problem would the State Route 900, May Valley Road roundabout be trying to solve? Is it trying to get people to Renton in 405?
I have to confess, I'm not, I'm not the expert on that project. That is something that Senator Mallett was able to insert into the transportation budget. And Bob, I don't know if you have anything you want to add?
Well, I think the biggest issue has been it's, it jams up traffic on there, and so looking at a roundabout would help enhance the throughput of, and make the road function better. So that was the primary reason we were looking at it. I know there was a sketch plan that WashDOT was directed to incorporate as part of their budget for this year. We haven't seen the results of that yet, but that was the primary goal, was see if there's ways that we could enhance the traffic flow through there so that the traffic jams that happen on SR 900, which backs up to Newport Way, especially in the PM peak, could perhaps be enhanced or better.
I'm just trying to picture in my head, if it's flowing south to Renton, that makes sense for Issaquah, but if it's adding to May Valley Road and just getting more cars to Isquah-Hobart Road faster, that actually could make Front Street worse? So I'm just, it's really hard with these little tidbits to tell what problem are we trying to solve? Are we trying to get more cars to Isquah-Hobart Road faster because it's plugged up and there's no money to fix it? Sort of like the same thing with the shoulder-hardening lanes. You know, take a look at it again, are you just trying to get more people to the problem faster? So I think somehow it would be helpful for our city to understand all of those pieces and how they connect, because I'm, I appreciate that Senator Mallett got the money, but I don't actually understand exactly how, how it would work or how we would benefit. So I'm not sure how to get more information on that, but we'll figure something out.
So I'll add it to my checklist here, and I think certainly what we could do is talk to WashDOT. You know, just anecdotally, it appears that most of the traffic that hits that intersection is either, either continuing through to Renton, or they turn left on May Valley, and then they turn right to, I'm forgetting the name of the street, but essentially they would end up on Fourth Street over by Liberty that runs over to the Renton Highlands. But you are correct, some, I'm sure, does go through and hit Hobart Road. So, but without a full traffic study, we wouldn't know, I couldn't tell you, you know, specifically.
So I had some comments and questions about the transportation needs one, and it is, it's hard, so there's a lot of text in here, and it's hard to pull out exactly what we're asking for. So I was a little bit confused by talking about regional pass-through corridors such as Isquah-Hobart Road, and didn't know if that was an acknowledgement that we needed money to widen the rest of Highway 18, and then why we also didn't talk about other needs for SR 900, like continued widening of SR 900. So I don't think, you know, we're talking about some projects that look like they're going to happen, or what are we going to be advocating for? What are we specifically going to ask for?
So I'm, I think dialing back a bit to last year when we were building our agenda for 2017. I think candidly, it's going to be difficult to go into the 2018 supplemental transportation budget and get a lot of new dollars, but last year when we were building the agenda for 2017, I think there was pretty strong direction from the council to make legislators aware of the significant traffic issues you were having on corridors like Isquah-Hobart, and the pass-through problems you were experiencing with folks who frankly don't live in Issaquah, and that that was a real gap that needed to be addressed. So some of that is an effort to carry over that reminder.
Okay, that's helpful.
And then the other part of this is to talk about protecting some of the things that they did do and did fund.
Okay.
So it's an attempt to get at those two things. I'm hearing that maybe we can... I'm hearing that maybe we can state that more clearly. And I think from Councilmember Pauline, maybe a desire to see what all the funded pieces are and how they fit together. So we can try and work on that.
I would break out the reminders a little more clearly to bullets, what we, the concerns that we have, what we like to, you know, realizing that we probably can't get any more money for them this time around, but continue to sound home what the specific problems are that we're looking to fix. That'd be my thought.
Doug, for the benefit of the public and maybe the council, you know, this legislative agenda is much thinner than like last year. And there's a reason why for that. Could you just quickly touch on that? What's different between 18 that you would see like in a 17 or a 19 year?
Sure. So the legislature is a little different creature than you all in the way they build their budgets. They do biennial budgets and they don't have one budget. They have three. So, you know, they do two-year operating capital and transportation budgets. And whereas they use their odd-numbered years for longer sessions, extremely long in the case of 2017, they use their even-numbered year sessions for 60-day get-togethers, where their budgets are meant to be a little bit more like your budget amendments, if I could make an analogy. And so it's more around course corrections than it is new things. And in particular with the transportation budget, the way that the transportation budget gets new funding is when the legislature approves things like new fuel taxes, which certainly don't happen every year. In my, you know, in my experience running down to the legislature, there's been three times it's happened over around the last 20 years. So it's difficult to make an annual appeal to the legislature for new funding in the transportation budget because it's so dependent on new revenue. So that's an attempt to answer Bob's question.
Yeah, so thank you. I can't keep the legislature's budget schedules clearly in my mind, obviously. So that's very helpful. Paul?
Yeah, I have a follow-up on that. Thank you. Just for clarification, then, for example, something like the widening of Highway 18 that is only two lanes. I think what I heard you just say suggested that because that's not in the Connecting Washington package, and it's very, it's not, it's rare for, and I think you were just saying new funding. So I was hearing that as a new project, if that's what you meant.
Yeah, so the Connecting Washington package from 2015 was about a $16 billion package. And the projects that were funded in that package are identified in a list. It's called the LEAP list. And so SR 90 and, or excuse me, I-90 and SR 18 was within Connecting Washington. I'd have to go back and look and see if there were any specific investments along SR 18. I don't believe there were any that were of a lot of interest to you all, but there may have been on other parts of 18. But I think your point is right. There's a defined list and getting new projects identified would almost require new revenue to come later.
Okay, thank you. And so that's not so much a comment about this agenda, but it does seem like what we're not doing here is calling out new projects. And they might not be on anybody's bill or any senator's wish list, or certainly not on the LEAP list. But I think a great job within 2017 of raising the awareness of the impacts of regional pass-through traffic. And so, yes, absolutely, let's continue that. Let's make that strong. And I want to just add that voice of further improvements to Highway 18. Because the capacity of that road, the interchange is one thing, fantastic. The capacity of it is most significant to Issaquah. It really means a lot to us. So that's the one we want to begin to start socializing. Thank you, Doug.
Thanks. Yeah, so we attempted to integrate a couple messages into some lines of text. And it appears we did so rather clumsily. So we'll take a stab at refining that.
Yeah, and I do want to convey, I think we've conveyed to our representatives that getting 18 fixed is, I mean, a huge issue for us. And so they're aware of that. I think the challenge is, and if you wanted to look in your crystal ball, Doug, is we almost need like Connecting Washington 2 or Redux, if you will, to try and get some real additional money to get those projects done. And I know we've talked, you know, a little bit with the legislators and we've pretty much have heard, well, we've got this project just done and we got the nickel, but we need, you know, we've conveyed, we need some additional ways to get these projects done. Because we're not going to see any real significant improvement to Hobart Road or 900 even in the long run until we can get 18 fixed.
And under current, the current situation, probably the soonest the legislature would deal with any significant new funding, and again, this could change if they decide they want to put new revenues on the table. But under Connecting Washington, they kind of envisioned something in about 2024. They've basically had something designed where they call it the Practical Design Program, where they can find savings on individual projects that would go in a bucket to pay for some new projects. But that's midway through Connecting Washington, so that's a ways away.
So Doug, just connecting the dots type question. So that's seven years' way. And we're looking at building thousands and thousands and thousands of housing units out here in Issaquah and everywhere else. And is there any conversation in Olympia that connects any aspects of growth management and the demand that's putting out here to transportation dollars? Because there's no impact fees being collected for these pieces, no new taxes, yet thousands of houses are being built and they're going to have to get to work.
So there is a definite regional conversation going on. In King County, it's called the Regional Transportation Systems Initiative. And so within that discussion, I think there is a real hard look at what existing tools might be in our toolbox and that we haven't used yet. There are things like transportation benefit districts. And could those be used among several jurisdictions along a corridor, for example? There's, under current statute, counties and cities within have the ability to do a local option fuel tax that has to be taken to voters. So there are some of those things being discussed. And, you know, that might be one area where not only Issaquah, but other cities in King County want to have more conversation. I think that's been started and is going to continue into next year.
I get that. It's just that all of that takes a lot of time. And the houses are being built now. And in two years, the county's going to sit down and say, so what are you taking for your next amount of growth? And at some point out here in the east where all the cities aren't, boundaries aren't touching, we actually have to connect to each other by county roads and state roads. It seems like at some point, cities that are on the east side and separate like this are going to come back and say, no more growth out here because we're getting nothing. We can't wait 10 years and build 5,000 houses in one city and 6,000 in another and 4,000 here and get no improvements. I'm just wondering if there's no heat to the conversation down there? Because we can't wait that long.
I hear your point. I think it would be a little disingenuous for me to sit here and say, yeah, there's going to be a pile of new money out of Olympia. I just can't do that. And I'd like to give you that answer, but it wouldn't be a very honest one. So point--
Does this play into Growth Management Act?
Certainly heard.
If we're looking at, if they're looking at Growth Management Act right now and studying it, you know, shouldn't we have something up here about our position on that, which is we can't take anymore because you're not building us any roads? I mean, that's the frustration level you get from May Valley, Kent, Covington, Black Diamond, North Bend, St. Louis, and Issaquah. I mean, more cities. It's like somehow we have to be talking about this now, that, you know, two years from now, we're going to take more housing units? You gotta be kidding me. Why would we do that? No improvements. So I feel like we're missing something here. It sort of covers what's on the legislator's agenda or their work plan for next year to do, but it misses the big point that it's not helping us. And I mean, if we've got to wait seven to 10 years for the highways, yet we have to build thousands of housing units in between, we've got a huge problem. I don't know how we phrase that or how we strategize, but it seems like we're missing something.
So we'll go back and see what we can do to restate some of this and I guess make some of those points.
I'm sure there are council members sitting here who definitely go to Olympia and talk if you told us that our voices would make a difference at certain times, especially during growth management. Absolutely.
So the next item that we have here are a series of requests that would come within the operating budget. And so I'll go through those. One is that we, in the last session, we had worked on this idea of taking the Sports Medicine Innovation Partnership Zone and trying to get a little bit of seed money to host a national or recruit a national sports medicine conference to Issaquah. And we got very close to getting that done. That was in one of the budgets, but not the final one. And so the idea here would be to essentially re-request $50,000 within the state's operating budget. And then we, in preparing this, we talked about the problem that the city is facing with PFOS and the cleanup of that in terms of the water supply. And we've worked with Department of Ecology, which has scraped together a little bit of money. There's some, you know, a little bit of money that the city and Eastside Fire and Rescue could also contribute that would help maybe look at a radius and identify an area for piloting some remediation. And so we thought that one was ripe for putting in an ask with the 2018 operating budget. We're lacking a specific number on that right now, but we hope to have something working with Ecology within the next month or month and a half. And then lastly, obviously, the city's been contacted by State Parks, which wants to partner on a programmatic environmental impact statement for Lake Semamish State Park. And so the idea here is to ask for around $100,000 in the State General Fund to help with the cost of the EIS. So that's the, you know, that's the Page 1 items that are very specific to you all. I think I've heard the rework that's needed on transportation. And I think the whole issue with GMA and accommodating growth versus not having infrastructure dollars to do it, I think we have to think about how to properly reflect that here.
Did you have--
Happy to take any other questions.
Question for Bob and a question for Doug. So the IPZ Innovative Partnership Zone is for sports medicine. And I can't remember exactly how that came about. If it, so if you want to explain why we ended up in the sports medicine area. And then the second one, Doug, was, so a conference, was there requirements for conference facilities or something that had to go along with that money? Because I'm having a hard time figuring out how or visualizing how we would run a conference in town. So I'm not sure what was tied to that. Or maybe those are both for Bob.
So Keith is here and was a big part-- Yeah, we got, want to come up here and answer that?
Good evening. Keith Niven, Director of Economic Development at this moment. So we put together an application for a Sports Medicine Innovative Partnership Zone based on kind of a sector analysis that we did with community attributes to identify which businesses we had the potential to grow. And given the fact that, you know, Swedish is one of our major employers, so we have Pro Alliance, we have a number of medical entities within the city, found out Issaquah High School has a nationally recognized sports medicine program. So it seemed like it was a coalescence of something that we could build on here. So we made the application for the IPZ. We got designated by the state as a Sports Medicine Innovative Partnership Zone. We created a steering committee of kind of interested partners. And we're really ready to take it to the next step. We think that hosting a regional or national sports medicine event in the city would be a nice opportunity to put a spotlight on Issaquah. And that's kind of where we are at the moment. We did not make much progress on it this year because of economic development staff being, working on moratorium work items. But that's kind of, we're ready to pick that up and go with it. If ultimately, we can't get an appropriation from the legislature, I think we're still looking at trying to do something that's high-profile here locally with our own kind of revenue.
Do we have the capacity to do a convention in town?
I think we do. You know, where? And, you know, it generally takes a couple of years once you schedule it. So assuming we could actually sponsor and land an event, we would likely have two years to plan it. And whether it would be held at Swedish or whether we do it somewhere else, I think that's yet to be determined.
I was going to say-- So to supplement what you said, so Bellevue College is a partner of ours--
Yes.
--as part of that. And so the thinking was, we don't have one location that could handle 1,000, you know, participants. So we thought, well, there may be multiple venues. So you'd have Bellevue College or maybe some that could happen in Eastgate. Then there may be some that happen in Issaquah. But the whole coordinating kind of oversight would be done by a partnership with the city and the Swedish and some of the sports medicine providers and then Bellevue College as well.
Thanks.
Are there questions for Doug and Bob? I have a question that's probably for Bob. Or it's for both of you, I guess, because I'm not sure who to ask. So we didn't talk about it, but also in our packet is a very lengthy report. And so is this the first time we've had this type of a report? Comprehensive report? I don't--
So ever since I've been working on your behalf, you get a report like that post-session from me, where we try and give the city, here's how you did on your priority issues. Here's some key implementation things you need to be aware of. If there's funding available, here's what it looks like. And you should at least take a look at whether you want to pursue it. Are there interim studies? Here they are. List them out. So that report's been issued for, gosh, what have I been doing work for? Seven years, I think, so.
I just don't remember it coming with our legislative agenda, but maybe I'm misremembering.
No, you're, so usually what we've done is had Doug come in and kind of do a year-end report separate. And so this year, we just did the written report. And since he was coming out for the 2018, thought, well, if there were opportunities or other questions affiliated with that, then we could incorporate it. But you're right, it hasn't been directly tied with like what we did this time. There was a, yeah. And I think a big part of it is the legislature kind of finished earlier than they have this year. So by the time they got done, it was just coordinating that kind of year-end report.
It was--
You would normally have it earlier.
Right.
But since they didn't finish till July 21st, it was--
Well, I appreciate having all of the comprehensive information here with the commentary that you provided, I thought was very, very helpful.
Thanks.
And then the legislative agenda, is this something that we drafted, produced in-house? Or Doug, did you do this? The legislative agenda?
Last session?
No, this one, the one we have, the 2018 proposed.
So the process is Doug meets and interviews with all the departments and the mayor's office. And we kind of work through what are priorities and identify the priorities. And then Doug takes the first draft at putting this together. And then it gets some additional edits by the department directors and the mayor's office.
Okay. Thank you. A lot of information. Any other?
Oh, and this is also the time, you know, if council has something that's not on here, like a good example would be the one that Tola brought up a few years ago on the trafficking, that we ended up adding that as a pretty significant plank. So if this is your opportunity, obviously, if you have something that you want us to go back, you think maybe we're missing, we can do that still.
Okay. Do we have anybody in the, who wants to make comments regarding this agenda bill? Nope? Okay, seeing none? Any more feedback from the council? All right. Thanks so much, Doug. It's always--
Thanks very much for having me.
A pleasure to have you here. Yep. Next item on the agenda, Agenda Bill 7488, establishing a multifamily housing property tax exemption program for proposed transit-oriented development parcel. Just in time. Jen Davis Hay.
Hi. Two accidents and a downed tree in St. Louis.
Do we need five? Let's take five. Five-minute break. Five-minute break.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. No, no, I figured I had some time, but.
Okay, we are back in session. Hi, hi, Jen. Agenda Bill 7488, Establishing a Multifamily Housing Property Tax Exemption Program for Proposed Transit-Oriented Development Parcel. Jen Davis-Hay.
So, I am here. Arthur Sullivan from Arch may be joining me later. He's coming from another meeting, and obviously, traffic and weather are delaying a lot of people. And so, and Jen Olson had planned to be here tonight. She does, is not going to be able to be here, but if there are questions we will definitely, that we cannot answer, we will definitely get those answers for you prior to the next discussion. So, again, my name is Jen Davis-Hay, here for Economic Development. And here comes Arthur, right on time. We are just starting, a little early. And so, we are here tonight to talk about the multifamily tax exemption and just, oh.
Excuse me, excuse me. Can you guys take the conversation out in the hallway, please? Thank you.
And so, I wanted to tell you, so you have in your packets, the resolution, an ordinance, and also the agenda bill. We noticed that the agenda bill did have some incorrect information as far as in the agenda bill. It mentioned different unit numbers for the actual project. I believe that must have been a project description from the beginning before the proposal has been refined. So, what you see on the proposal on the slideshow tonight is correct. I will change that in the agenda bill. And also, wanted to mention that as of 2:00 today, Arthur and myself had a conversation about the ordinance, and there's some tweaking of adding state law instead of law in there. So, there'll be some changes that, and we expect, obviously, from this conversation, if there are changes, that that will be made to the ordinance as well prior to the next discussion. First, I, so the presentation goes again, tonight, to talk about the MFT, the impact on the property tax collection, and then discussing the resolution and the ordinance for the TOD. This is a timeline, so as you recall, in September, the council passed the housing strategy. One of the strategies was to explore the implementation of the MFTE program by the end of the year. So, we are here tonight to talk about that. We will be at Services and Safety Committee tomorrow night to continue the discussion, and then back to the full council on the 4th for the public hearing for the residential targeted area, as well as considering adoption of the MFTE program. So, we're going to be generally talking about the TOD project, just to give those who may not be as aware of that project. And then Arthur will talk about more details about the MFTE program in general, how it impacts Issaquah. And then I'll also talk about the property taxes specifically for this project. Any questions before we move forward? Okay. So, as you may recall, the Transit-Oriented Development Project is something that the city's been working with, with the development team since that we identified earlier this year. And CenturyLink, which is that coral site there, which is a project site, we are, actually have, have adopted MOU, which is a binding agreement, to move forward with this. And the development team is also planning on being here tonight, so we hope that if there's any question for them, they will be able to discuss with them as well. So, the components of the Transit-Oriented Development include that the project is a vertical mixed building, which is great for the central Issaquah area. We are looking at approximately 355 units, and 175 of those are affordable. And that has been adjusted since the original proposal, partially looking at the parking arrangement, partially looking at how they arranged the layout within their building. So, we're excited to see that there are more units of affordable provided. There also is a ground floor commercial, so there's going to be some private tenants, as well as the city owning a portion of the office space on the ground floor. And we will be back to council to present some information about that. We are conducting RFP for that space for nonprofits. And today was actually the deadline for those proposals. We received four, but didn't have a chance to, you know, review them in depth. But our team, including the developers, will be looking at that to make a selection. And then here's a little bit of a rundown about the housing components. And so, you'll notice that there's an asterisk, okay, depending if the MFTE is adopted or not. So, we're looking at providing affordable units at the 40%, 60%, and 80% AMI, and then the market rate units as well. So, again, this is a mixed-use, a mixed-income building, buildings, two of them. In general, we just wanted to provide you an idea of how does the MFTE fit in for this whole project? So, the current project budget is looking at about 124 million, yes?
Sorry, I have a question. Can you go back one slide just for a second?
Yes.
So, when you talk about 40% of AMI, and 60% of AMI, and 80% of AMI, is some of that done, is that, I'm not sure how I want to ask my question, but it isn't just that like studios can count at 40% and two-bedrooms count at 80%?
Right. Nope. Correct. And Arthur's really good about helping with, from Arch, helping us to make sure that they're comparable to the entire mix. So, that way, it does have a spread across.
So, how, so how do you do that? How do you say, like a two-bedroom, I mean, you know, if you have a two-bedroom at 2,000 or a studio at 1,000, it's not really apples to apples, right? Yes, you've got a $1,000 apartment, but it's tiny, and so, it's not really, it's like, is it 40% of what the typical unit of that size would?
Of your, of your income? Yeah, and actually, if Arthur wants to.
Do you want to do that?
Yes, I do. Okay. So, that, that actually provides some information about unit size and AMI and typical household income, and I didn't.
Because I was talking about my mythical like firefighter and teacher, and, you know, you hope that they're not having to be in a studio, and that counts as like, you know, voila, problem solved.
Right. Right. So.
Is this on the website yet?
Not, I don't believe so. Is it, we haven't had this in, on for the affordable housing. Have we had this handout on the website for the affordable housing? Okay.
Haven't looked at it yet. We probably want to get it uploaded.
Yep. So, we'll add this to the website. So, and this is an example, again, that Arthur provided last week for the affordable housing inclusionary zoning discussion. And so, it gives you an idea of at different levels of AMI and with the studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedrooms.
So, can I ask, and I realize that the committee meeting is tomorrow, but is it, would it be possible to get a little breakdown of what types of things are at 40, what types of things are at 60, and what types of things are at 80? Just to.
Yep.
It's studio versus one bedroom versus two bedroom, to see that there's studio at one bedrooms and two bedrooms at 40, there's studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms at 80? It is?
Yeah.
Well, this is, this is for this project.
Those are typical.
Specific to this project?
Yes, specific to this project. Correct. Specific to this project. So, in other words, there's 30 units at 40%. What's in the mix of those 30 units? There's 120 units at 60.
Right. Yep, we have that actually here, and so, I can, I can provide it tomorrow night, or you want me to read it to you now?
Uh, well.
Enjoy.
It's, oh, it's a page on the packet?
Okay.
Which page?
404.
404. Thank you.
I don't know that that tells the unit size, does it? Maybe it's a different.
Oh, gives the affordable.
Yeah. So, in, in general, we're looking at the three bedrooms are actually at the 40% affordability AMI. And the one bedroom and two bedrooms are at 60%. And then there are a range of studios to three bedrooms available at the 80%. But I can provide that information in writing and have it tomorrow.
Great. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Okay, so, again, looking at what the project, and I will mention that Hal Ferris from Spectrum Development Solutions is here, so if there are questions more specifically for the TOD project, he may be able to answer those. But in general, the project budget is about 124 million, and I wanted to show you, again, the sources of funding and their order of magnitude, to give you an idea of, we all probably understand how complicated affordable housing projects are. But that, looking at, you know, all the way down from, we know that the, for instance, the King County TOD fund, we have an application in for a $10 million award, you know, is, that's $10 million. So, everything above that means that's a larger investment than $10 million. City resources are important to the mix as well, so you take one of these out, and it makes the whole kind of house of cards tumble.
So, Jen, three city resources are less.
The total for the three city resources, then, are less than $10 million?
Yes.
And then, if you stay on that, isn't there one on that list that, is it the low-income housing tax credit that's, is that the one that's being debated right now?
So, yes, thank you. So, you might have received a follow-up email from Dan Watson today about where that stands. So, that is, obviously, with the federal tax reform bill. And right now, he mentioned, so this is, you know, right now, the Senate version did not eliminate what's called the private activity bonds and the tax exemption program. The House is, hardly anything's been changed on that, so they hope, they're very hopeful that things will come together in the conference. The other piece is that there's been a lot of, I'm sure, advocating from throughout the country, and there will be an op-ed they're working on, they'll be in the Seattle Times to continue the, informing folks about what that is. And he said, may even mention the Issaquah project and how this is one of those projects that may not move forward if this happens. So, we'll let, let you know if that actually occurs, so.
Which, just to reiterate, I think what you said is, if one of these funding mechanism goes, then lapses. So, it's very important to this project and many others, that that does not get cut from the proposed.
Exactly.
Federal tax code revisions.
Okay. And then, just to let you know about the King, a quick update about the King County TOD fund, actually, it's more of a general information sheet. So, they, they applied for that in mid-September. We'll know by mid-December what the award is. They've had communication in between. And so, this just though, gives an overview of the fund itself, so that it was passed last July by King County. And so, it gives you a rundown of the $87 million that they committed to that. We are one of those 10 million set-asides, and so, these are the different areas that are available for the fund. Any questions before I move forward? Okay. All right, I am going to step aside. Are there any questions about the TOD project in general before I step aside and have Arthur discuss more about the MFTE program? I think you guys have heard a lot about it, but, all right. So, Arthur?
Evening. So, I'm going to give you a quick, I think we've done this once before with you, an overview of the provisions in general under the state legislation for multifamily tax exemption, and then sort of how we've been looking at it in terms of helping with your staff on this particular property. So, there is state legislation that authorizes cities to offer an eight or a 12-year of property tax exemption. The exemption is on the improvement costs, so you continue to pay taxes on the land and any non-commercial uses that would typically pay property taxes. The city goes through a process. There are standards within the RCWs about what type of areas they can be included, and so it's up to a city to decide. They can go as small as they'd like, as large as they'd like, as so long as they keep within the standards. It is intended to be for areas that are mixed-use, though you can include zones that are multifamily only, so long as they're like immediately adjacent to the commercial uses. So, Kirkland has done that in a lot of their neighborhoods. They take both the commercial and the surrounding multifamily. So, it's, there's a process that you have to go through to designate those through a public hearing process. There are other, for the 12-year, there is, the program is predicated on some type of public benefit for the eight or 12-years. State legislation is open-ended as to how to interpret ways of looking at the public benefit. But for the 12-year exemption, one of those public benefits are, or the public benefit must be an inclusion of 20% of the units affordable, as affordable housing, yes.
Agenda Bill says that also on the front page, and it talks about the current proposal would provide a 12-year tax exemption in exchange for. would provide a 12-year tax exemption in exchange for 15% of housing at 60, and five at 80%.
Yes.
But that means the current proposed ordinance, not the TOD proposal, because the percentage has a ton more.
Yes.
So if we're doing a pilot, say we want to test out the MFT,
Right.
Why wouldn't our language match exactly what we're being offered in our project, which is higher? Why would we set the bar lower?
So I'm, I'm going to have a slide in a few where you guys can open that up for conversation. But basically, in my old lifetime, it's sort of like, you try to match different programs to the affordability that that program is creating. So we wanted to look at it from the point of view of, if you look at this program in tandem with what you have in place, what would you typically provide, okay? So whether, how you want to document what you do, through what programs, that's something for you to, for discussion. But we'll try to show you sort of the dynamic of those different pieces, so...
We could, our ordinance actually could just be for a pilot project, and could have higher numbers of it.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but you have, what's being proposed is a very small geographic area. So if you look in Bellevue, and I believe also in Kirkland, when they create different RTA, different areas, they, you can't have different affordability in different areas, okay? So we were sort of looking at this as part of central Issaquah, so what might the standard be looking at, how you're setting up there? But that's something for further conversation by you. And then you have other discretion on things you can include in the program as well. But when you look at the draft ordinance, there's a lot of language in there that's pretty much the same as almost every city uses, where we're covering a lot of the more administrative and technical issues that go typically with an MFT program. I think I've already hit on the main points that are on here, and the main one is, what is actually exempted? And then, in terms of the impact to districts, taxing districts, schools, and cities, and states, and stuff, our understanding is, is that the difference, that it varies depending on the type of district and how you collect your property taxes. So for cities, and like the state, typically, the amount of your property taxes is equal to what you're allowed to sort of increase it by, is equal to what your base was from the previous year, plus 1%, plus new, right? On top of that, anything that's new that's created. So in those circumstances, the impact is, you're deferring that new building from entering the tax, or that improvement, from entering the tax roll until year 12. So you're basically, you're not reducing your base or anything like that, you're just not getting as big an increase from that increment piece. There are others, like school districts in particular, I think of the most, where they have a levy where they are asking for a certain amount of money. And once that's approved, they are going to collect that amount of money. That district isn't going to get less money, what the impact is, is when new properties come into that district, it spreads the cost to more players. And so it's literally, your tax rate for an individual home might go down, because the district is still collecting the same amount, but now you have a bigger tax base, and so it slows it down. What you're not doing in that case, is you're not adding that in there, so what happens is, the district still collects the same, but the amount that it reduces for every individual property owner doesn't happen. That might have otherwise theoretically happened, yes.
That's on the taxes collected, but what about the impact fees for school district?
So for the impact fees, so you're saying the deferral of impact fee, or not the non-payment for affordable units?
Well, we can do non-payment for the city portion, but for our particular school district?
Yes.
Do they still get to collect their impact fee on the affordable units?
Your policy, that you have a program with the school district in place now, I believe still in place, is that affordable units are exempted from paying school impact fees?
Only the affordable ones are, the market rate will pay. The market rate will pay.
Right, where the market rate ones will, but the affordable ones do not. And many, in fact, almost all school districts have that policy in East King County at this point in time, so that's nothing unique to you. In fact, you were one of the last cities to implement that about four years ago. But that's been on the books for a number of years, and so that's all accounted for when you're setting the fee levels initially. They know, you know, that part of their analysis is, we're not getting revenue from maybe some portion of units. Okay? So that's just something we just sort of wanted to put out there, if you have more questions and stuff. There are a number of other cities that have multifamily tax exemption programs. I was just in Bellevue, that's why I was late, because I got stuck between the tree, between my two meetings. And so Bellevue is one, they're looking at sort of modifications or potential updates to the program they've had in place. Some of the cities only use eight years, some use 12 years, some use both. Really, it has varied pretty significantly how different cities use it, some use it, let's see, Kenmore's there, and it's sort of the approach that you're looking at right now, it's a site. Redmond just adopted theirs earlier this year, and it's three different neighborhoods over Lake Downtown and Marymore. So different cities have really approached it very differently. I'll just sort of leave it at that, and see if you have any specific questions, but it really has been all over the map, based on the local conversations, so, but I can give you more detail on some of those, if you're curious, but just wanted to let you know, we did look at those. So, what we tried to list in this next couple slides are, what are the type of issues in front of you that are sort of policy-type discussions? And then we've also highlighted some administrative issues that we just wanted you to be aware of, that we sort of have a recommendation based on what others have done, but those are areas you could look at as well. So the first is, what area are you selecting for your RTA? The proposal is just for the sound, for the site that you're working on with the Housing Authority and Spectrum Development. Do you want to have an eight or a 12-year exemption? At this point, it's being proposed as only a 12-year exemption, the development team requested to have that time period. Another question is out there, and again, not necessarily relevant here, but in some cities, is it only there for new construction rental, or new construction ownership housing? It's a much more complicated topic when you get into ownership, we did not include that in here, wasn't relevant to this site, but a number of other cities have, in the end, when you start looking, especially for the 12-year exemption, where there's an affordability provision, it gets incredibly complex in trying to figure out how that really works in a way that doesn't put a lot of market rate homeowners at risk of tax penalties because of the affordability provisions. Then, the main one is, what affordability levels, and we'll come back to that again, the amount and the level. So that can be the percentage of median income, so that's where this chart comes into play. We want, when you see the chart with what's being proposed, be able to translate that. This chart also shows you what average rents are for overall rental housing in Issaquah, as well as for newer housing, because, again, when we're doing the analysis of doing these types of programs, we have to look at what the market rate builder is looking at in his pro forma for his building, not necessarily what the average citywide is. Because you're, you're trading off, and a value of something you're giving them in exchange for asking something in exchange. So there, when we do the analysis part, we are looking at that. Yes?
Thanks, Arthur. So two questions. When you said, "We should decide about the eight and 12," so are you going to give us some more information on, like, this proposal is requesting 12 years, but are you going to give us more on the pros and cons of eight versus 12?
More than happy to talk with you about that, yes.
And then the second...
I don't have it listed in the presentation, but yes, we can talk with you about that.
And then the second piece was, of the 175 that are affordable, out of the 355, are they all rental?
This whole property is a rental property, yes. Okay? The administrative issues are things such as the approval process, which is proposed to be done, just sort of like you do with zoning, once you set the rules in place, you have the planning director oversees. The process for doing any appeals, which are hearing examiner. There is a two-step process for getting a property tax exemption, and the second step is related to, you sort of give a preliminary before they start construction, and then when they finish the building, you give a final. And so they do a contract at the time of the initial, but you have to give a final certificate. So if, for some reason, you deny it at the final, in addition to the hearing examiner, the developer has the right to go to the courts and say, "Wait a minute, I followed everything you told me to do in the preliminary step, why are you saying no all of a sudden to me?" So, and that is spelled out in a section related specifically to appeals. There is a thing about a fee, is there an application fee? And most, you know, you can charge nothing, the max you can charge is based on doing an analysis of your staffing costs. I think we've collected data on what Bellevue, Seattle, Redmond, and Kirkland charge, they do it basically on a staff time, and it's usually between $1,000 and $3,000. The assessor also has, charges a fee, because they're the ones who have to record it and track it. So there's a small fee that goes to the assessor as well, so that's another administrative item. And I think I'm forgetting one, because I, one of the administrative items, but they are, we can go through, they're all in the ordinance, but we pretty much use the approach that we've seen other jurisdictions have typically been using, but happy to go into any of those if you have questions about those, okay? So, this is the map. Any questions before I sort of now start getting into the more specifics of looking at the site, and more the specific proposal? So what you see in the box here are what is listed in the RCWs regarding identifying your residential targeted area. Again, this is a single-site-specific area, so I think these are the criteria there, and we feel that this site clearly meets the criteria of the state RCWs. So you have the mixture of uses, you have the proximity, you have statements about needs for housing and affordable housing in general, so we feel that this site clearly meets the state standards, so we don't think there's an issue there. Any questions about that there? Okay. Again, on the eight versus 12 years, we are recommending the 12-year in this proposal, and the probably, that, one, they are offering, we think that, we're going to get to a slide in one or two, that we think that the value that you're getting justifies the 12-year, they are meeting the affordability, even when accounting for the land use and all the direct assistance. We think that, you know, the private piece and what they're proposing, and how it's laid out, we think it's justifiable to do the 12-year exemption. Spectrum can speak better to this, but one of the things I've heard from the development community is that part of the value in this is, they're trying to borrow, when you looked at the list, there's a lot of private debt. And so one of the issues is, what will a private lender lend you? And often, at least I've heard some builders say, if you only have an eight-year exemption, they might not account for the property tax deduction, or exemption, in order to do your underwriting. Whereas if you go over, I've been told 10 years, they may say, "We will account for that in your underwriting," so that they can borrow an amount that is justifiable, given the reduced cost of the property taxes during that period. And so that's one of the many pieces that goes into that funding and the formula. So those are probably the two on the top of mind, pros and cons of doing eight for 12. Obviously, you're providing an exemption for four years longer, so that's obviously the flip side, that's the cost to public cost benefit. But those are the, those are the reasons that we feel that it's worthwhile, given the affordability you are getting, and the ability to help have that little bit longer time period may help in the overall financing structure for the developer. So, any questions about eight versus 12?
Did you say you were going to actually show us how you computed that?
Yes, yes, that's, in a slide or two, I sort of have something that kind of, or I'll talk through that, and then we can, I'll talk through sort of the economics and how we looked at it. Then the other is, the rental and ownership, I think we said earlier, we think at this point, especially given the proposal, we just stick with the drafting as it being a rental. Another circumstance for cities is, there is a way to, can use it for existing housing, but that housing has to be dilapidated, so we have written it to only include new housing, okay? And there, in other words, if you had a building that was falling apart and was under the code, not habitable, then potentially, you could have it use that. So that's helpful in a community, in some communities where they have an older housing stock, and they're trying to encourage it to be redeveloped and stuff. But in this case, not really apropos, so we're proposing you just include the new housing only. And then the state law requires that any development must have more than 10 new residential units. So that's, again, just taking it straight from the RCWs. Any questions on that piece? Okay. So now we're at the affordability level and the amount, and then the duration of the affordability. So this is the key elements of the affordability component. So what we are suggesting, and this is from looking at it from the incremental points of view of all that stack of things that are going into this property, is you are looking at an update to your land use provisions for this area, which included, I believe, an option, I have, let's see, do I have both my folders with me? I didn't grab my other folder, but what did we have in front of you last week? For this area?
12.5.
Hmm? I think it's the 12.5 at 60% of median. So that's under your land use provision, so what we were saying is, build from that, okay? And so what we looked at, and what we proposed here is, and again, we also looked at the affordability levels that are being proposed. The Housing Authority has a significant number of units, and this might be where...
12.5?
No, I've got that chart, I just, I'm almost wanting to jump ahead a few slides here.
I have a question about this one. So this is the slide that actually confused me, because this is sort of what a model ordinance might look like for us if we wanted to use this in many areas.
Correct.
So Tibbetts Valley Transit-Oriented Development Residential Targeted Area, this could actually have these higher percentages.
Yes.
Okay.
And theoretically could, I think. The question is, where do you, where do you want to have the affordability levels you're looking for land ultimately in your agreements for this project? You are going to have three or four opportunities for doing so. One is your land use code, one is MFT, if you adopt this, third is you have a development agreement, and fourth, you have funding.
So the low bar, or the low number, would be the 12.5%, which Land and Shore was talking about the other day, if it was going to be inclusionary zoning.
Right.
This middle level, if we didn't have a development agreement, and we just had an MFT, is at the 20% level.
Correct.
And if we have a development agreement, we can, you know, write our ordinance with these numbers, which is the 175 units out of 355 at the different levels. We could write a specific table in the ordinance that's very, very high.
You could, yes, that is correct.
Are you suggesting, then, that the ordinance and a development agreement don't need to match?
Correct.
Okay.
Exactly. That, you're right, you have that option in flexibility.
Makes sense now.
Okay? So what we're proposing is, and the way we do the math, and for, some of you got to hear the math explanation last week, but it's the same basic concept, which is, we looked at already having units affordable, assuming the 15% and 60% of median. And then we looked at the value of adding MFT to this property, and saying, what is the value of MFT? Looking at typical rents and sales price, you know, typical appraised values, so that's what you're giving here, and, you know, versus when we did the land, we were looking at land value, now we're looking at the property tax exemption value, and comparing that to how much we're asking the rents to be further reduced. And just sort of looking at both of those present value those, and say, from a present, from a developer's present value point of view, are you giving it at least as much, and probably need a little bit more for it to be incentive for someone to choose to use something, between the two? So that the value of the property tax exemption is slightly greater than, or is greater than the cost to that builder for agreeing to the affordability. And, you know, one of the tricks when doing the MFT is, you're only getting the property tax exemption for 12 years, but you're agreeing to, if it's a time period other than 12 years, you're asking for longer-term affordability. And so here, we're proposing longer-term affordability, but that means you can't ask for as much affordability, because you're asking it for a longer period of time. So we feel that at these levels here, you will see in a couple minutes, a chart that shows you how we kept adding up, and it started attributing different components to making this thing feasible, and that each of those pieces feel like they're all adding up to something that makes sense, so that you feel the public investment, and this project makes sense for all those pieces when you add them together, okay?
So on the inclusionary piece, Arthur, is that not life of the project, then? 12.5% is 50 years, or something like that?
That's for the life of the project. We're proposing similar terminology.
I mean, just under land use?
Yes.
Land use is also life of the project?
Yes, correct. And that means while that building is in place. So if it's 20 years, or 30 years, or 80 years, it's while that building is in place. So it would be mirroring the type of affordability approach as your land use would require. Okay? So, this is your chart, so it actually was in the packet, but this, the one you have in front of you has lots of different income levels, but we just, for you to refer to, and you all now have that handout, so I'm not going to dwell on this, but this just is showing you, we wanted you to be able to see a different rent level, so when you're having this conversation. And then, as I said, we've pointed out what, oh, we don't have the new rents in this version, I think the handout has newer rents on it, so you can see newer, you know, so... I think the handout has newer rents on it, so you can see newer, you know, so newer buildings. And you'll see there that newer buildings, you don't have, that you can see that the rents are higher than general overall averages, and that will be even more so for a building that's in the proposal stages, okay? Because they'll typically be at the top end of even the newer stuff, so, but that's just, we did that to illustrate that as much and make that clear for you. So now, oh, here are the administrative issues, so they got moved around a little bit. So there is a covenant, so that's, there's a provision, and we've put the section of your code here that deals with the affordability, so that, or where that covenant is addressed. And that basically talks about, Councilor Marks' comment about, how do we know what the mix is, affordable units is going to be? So that's documented in the covenant. So we, in a building that has market rate and affordable, we allow builders to, if they want to over time, change to specific units, but we always want to make sure it has a specified mix of studios, ones and twos, that are comparable, and that's what I believe Spectrum has proposed here, is that the affordable units in his, in that building would be the same proportion, they would be 10% of each of the unit sizes that they have, and it does include two bedrooms as well, as well as ones and studios. So this covenant, make sure it talks about how we, how it gets monitored, how incomes are screened, and things, and a variety of things along those lines. That the mix of the units, as I just mentioned, is comparable, that there is an annual certification to the, by the owner to the city, so that that gets reported, and then we send a report to the state as well, they want to track how the program overall is being used. And then we also have something for an annual report to the council within the ordinance as well, so that there would be a report to you every year, so you could see whatever is going on, so if you ever expanded, there'd be more, or here at least know what's going on with this property. Okay? So those are, and then, as I mentioned, the application processing, I think I hit most of these already. And the other one I didn't mention was the timing of the application. And the general is, is that, the intention is, you usually like to get these things in earlier, builders are designing their building, if they're going to use a program, and so you do it before the first permit, you get the preliminary approval done, but some discretion. Now, here's an example of, as you were saying, this is one area, we did include administrative items that we think if you ever did, you know, you might not have do exactly here, we know we're going to get that request, but this at least creates a clarity, so that if you ever expand the program, you have in place already systems that we think are appropriate and that we've seen other cities use. So we just included all those in here, so that you have that baseline, and then, just like Kirkland did, you can add new neighborhoods easily if you want, and then you just deal with, the administrative issues are pretty much in place, but it's then the affordability levels and stuff like that that you might want to do different, then you add that to the code. So those are things that are all addressed in the draft ordinance. So, now it's, I explained a little bit about property taxes and the economics of the deal. So that was just sort of the overview of the, sort of administrative and the content, and are you ready to talk about sort of the property taxes? So this is just your pie chart, you probably see this from time to time showing, in the city of Issaquah, your total tax levy rate is $9.9 to the 1,000, and that is, or to the 10,000, and this just shows you where that 9.907 goes to, for all the different taxing districts that local property, that local residents are paying when they pay property taxes. So you can see schools are a significant portion, and this is just sort of the split out between all the various taxing districts. What this chart's showing is currently what the property is paying in property taxes, what we would expect, estimate, the property in the middle column will be paying during, if you approve the exemption, during the exemption period between land value and the commercial value that would be in the property. And then the last column is, and these are all in current, I think these are all in present dollars, when the property goes on the tax roll, when the private property goes on the tax roll, how much that would bring in. Now, that's only for the Spectrum portion, the Housing Authority portion, for two different reasons, will generally be tax exempt. One is, when Housing Authority's own property, they're property tax exempt. The second is the funding sources that you saw listed, the bonds and stuff like that, automatically in this state, trigger affordability if the property is at certain affordability level. So those two provisions, almost all the properties you've ever funded up in the YWCA, those properties that are funded through your funding sources and are leveraging state and county dollars, generally are not paying property taxes, so that's universally been true for a long time. Yes?
So, Arthur, looking at the tax breakdown by jurisdiction?
Yes.
So the schools would lose, or not receive tax dollars in the first year of $35,000, but cumulatively $250,000. But they would then, if we approved this project in ordinance, recoup that 251 by adding it incrementally to their impact fees, so it's still recovered?
No, what would happen is, I can't, what I'm fairly certain will happen is, their money is coming from a levy, and therefore the levy will generate a certain amount of revenue. So this is when I gave the two examples of how different districts are impacted, what happens in this circumstance is, they don't have this new property trying to, you know, if they were collecting $10 million a year, they didn't add this new property to help cover some of that cost. So this is an example where, if they had come online, they would have maybe lowered the property taxes a little bit for individual, of the other property owners in the district, would have not, so it doesn't make it go up, it just doesn't allow it to come down a little bit, because usually the levy is for a certain amount over a period of time. So the district still should get the revenue they're looking at, but how they would collect it, there'd be one less property helping to pay it, and that wasn't in there anyway. They were paying, they had the 4 million today, that's not going down, so they're not contributing less, it's just they're not adding into the assessment base. So we, is that, okay, go ahead.
So I just want to clarify, so the middle column is actually what they will collect in years zero through 12, and then the last column is 13 above, so they will still collect the 34,000?
Oh.
Yeah, so it's not, yeah, it's not reducing or less, that's okay. No, that's good, though, to remind, that, so this is, the 34, 950 for the schools, for instance, are on the, again, the land and on the commercial portion. So they will, currently, they're getting 17,000 and change, they will, again, assuming it's 8.6 assessed value, get 34.
In years one to 12.
Yep.
And 251 and 13 years.
Exactly. So it's a deferral of that decrease.
It's a deferral. Thanks.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, yes.
I may repeat something you just said, but just to be absolutely clear, so let's look at those years, you know, one through 12, that middle column.
Mm-hmm.
The city of Issaquah would still be collecting 9,660.
Correct.
From that property, from that property.
Yes.
But for the school district, the difference is, the school district is, still has a number they're getting from their collection of properties, this portion, just the, the greater number isn't contributing to that, but the lesser number is.
Right. Yes. Okay. All right?
I get it.
Any other questions on this chart? Because now we're about to get into the site itself, and so that's sort of looking at it from the public point of view, now we're looking at it from the development point of view, starting to look at it from the development point of view. So what we've basically done is given you a summary of, because you're, my understanding, and this is exactly what Kirkland did with the South Kirkland Parking Ride, there's a private piece, and there's a public piece, right? Publicly funded Imagine Housing, privately funded Polygon. And so this has some similarities there, and the city of Kirkland approached it the same way. They said, for our land use requirements and our MFTE, we will look at the combined property to meet our requirements. So here, we've just listed what the affordable unit mix would be, and the affordability level for each property, and then we show you the total. So as you can see, the total amount of affordability is 50%, is being proposed when you look at it as a single property, with it being 100% on the Housing Authority, and then the 11%, 10% from Spectrum for their units, and then you can see where the affordability mix is. So then, what we've done, that's looking at it from what's being proposed. The bottom chart is sort of now looking kind of at your rules, or what the rules might be, and saying, okay, so how are we helping to create this 176 affordable units? We're saying, under your land use, you would have required 44 of the units to be affordable at 60% of median. Then, under the MFTE as being proposed, we go, okay, we've got to get to 15, we've already got 44 at 60, so now I got to add another nine more to get to the 15%, and then I'm going to have 18 at 80% for MFTE, so that then means, what are we getting above and beyond? So this column here is saying, if you were just, that's all you were doing, was land use and MFTE on this property, how much more affordability are you getting above and beyond that? And so this is the three at 80, 78 at 60, and 24 at 40% of median. Okay? And so that's 105 units. So that's kind of what the TOD, and the Arch Funds, and the fee waivers are all helping to make happen. And, yes.
So we've got two players here, we have the Housing Authority and Spectrum.
Right.
It's like, they came up with those numbers, they, the numbers of units, they didn't, they don't know what our code, land use code is going to be.
Right. But, what, okay, yes.
But, so it almost sounds like we're back, you're going to be back into this based upon what they've proposed.
I am, yes, to some degree, that is a way to describe it. What I'm trying to do is to see, because I work for the public, is, are your public investments making sense? Okay, sorry. Are your public investments making sense when, each of these? So is the amount of the TOD request reasonable, given the other pieces? So normally, like when we were looking at the YWCA, and we didn't have MFTE or land, you know, we just sort of said, hey, how much public money is it makes sense to get this level of affordability? So what we're trying to do for you here is to account for the different sources to say, does it add up to a figure that seems to make sense? So that's because we're going to the cities and asking all the cities for $2 million, you know, just like you're looking at MFTE, it's like, why should we be all doing this? Let's make sure we're using our money wisely. So that's the purpose of this exercise. Okay? So we're kind of doing that drill down to make sure that, yes, they came up with a package, we're double-checking that package from the public investment side. And, yes.
I read in here that there's a public benefit requirement to, or element to this?
For the MFTE?
Mm-hmm.
Which can be met through the affordability.
Is that part of, the additional affordability, speak to the public benefit part of it?
Yeah.
There's an additional?
Isn't the MFTE column the public benefit?
Is that the public benefit?
Yes.
MFTE column?
Well, that's, that's, in other words, what you need to do to get to that 20% of the total project, so that's the increment above the land use. So the next chart is going to take this one step deeper.
Let me, I have a question.
I'm not sure I'm quite following your question.
So, what I asked you earlier, so right now, if we decided in this city we didn't want to use MFTE, under our moratorium, we are talking about looking at inclusionary zoning, though.
Right.
So your column called land use says, if we just had inclusionary zoning, we'd get 44 units.
Right.
But you've written an ordinance for us as if we, as a city, adopt an MFTE program with a 20% requirement, and that differential between 12.5% and 20, gets another 27 units. Over and above that, the proposal that's on the table for the TOD provides 105 more units than that.
Correct.
So that's showing a significant public benefit compared to inclusionary zoning.
So, right.
Or MFTE, this is that much more.
So when I start looking at the money side of it, I go, well, from my point of view, the money side should link to the 105, because the other tools that you've put on the table have gotten, theoretically should get us to that level. And so we're trying to make sure that there isn't double-counting essentially going on. And so what we're saying is, is the, you know, is the 13 million between fee waivers and the Arch Cities and the TOD reasonable for 105 units, given the affordability mix that's being proposed? And we're saying, when we look at other projects and things along those lines that we funded recently, yes, that looks like a reasonable combination of investments.
So, Arthur, without looking at the table ahead, do you actually pull out, and I recognize that this project has many more funding sources than some of our others. Do you ever pull out just the Issaquah tax component of it, so that we can see on a per-unit basis whether or not King County Housing or anybody gives us grants, what the Issaquah taxpayers are putting in per unit? If not, if that's not here tonight, I would like to see that.
I have it cut and sliced almost every way you could imagine, so I wanted to hear your questions before trying to answer specifics. So let me make sure, I have the city and the city fee waivers, you know, and I didn't, you know, so I have it cut that way, and so is that what you think you're looking, is that what you're asking for?
As far as I understand, there are three components to the city's piece.
Okay.
Fee waivers, the tax exemption, and the cost of land, is that right? We have three contributing sources from the city? And what I'd like to understand is, if I'm a taxpayer?
Right.
It doesn't matter that there's three sources, how many taxpayer dollars from the city of Issaquah are used to subsidize each affordable unit? That's sort of the number I'd like to see. I'd like to see it broken out, but I'd like to see it as a lump sum, too. Thanks.
Fee waivers, and...
Arch, I would say, Arch contribution included in the city.
So that's where it gets a...
No, I don't think so. So for me, so for me, I consider Arch...
That's where it gets complicated, because, right.
I understand that we give Arch money, and then Arch manages the funds, and some come back. I'd like to see that separately. I would, I would not like to see the Arch one count as a total Issaquah dollars, maybe if we gave, I don't know, I agree that's complicated, but I'd rather see it separate for now. Because some projects, we contribute to Arch, and they don't contribute to our project, so I'd like to see that number separate.
Right, so just, so I'm going to put something out there for your minds to muddle with on that question. Through history, you've put up somewhere in the ballpark, and I, actually, I didn't, I don't know if I brought that chart tonight, but I've done this for all the cities, you've put up like $5 million towards projects throughout all areas. The city, the projects that have landed in Issaquah have received like 6 million. So you've actually had money from other net, so I don't know, you know, now on this project, when we look at the two, you know, we don't know quite yet where the 2 million is all going to come from, so that's what complicates it a little bit, is how much of that's Issaquah versus how much of that's going to come from all the other cities. So that's what I'm saying when I say complicates it for this specific project, is because, yes, only a portion, but I don't even know exactly what portion is yours quite yet, because we're going to, we've got four projects we're looking at simultaneously, kind of thing. So, but we will do our best to give you some, and we also have information sort of like other projects, and so that you can, we can give you information about like other ones being looked at and stuff. One thing we did look at is how much money is coming from cities for this project, so if we take all the cities, all the Arch requests, and all the fee waiver, those two numbers, because those are, and look at those two, and we compare that to the almost very similar project going on in Redmond right now, which is also asking for TOD money, but it's going through that at-large pot. The amount of money coming into Trailhead from the city sources is about 29,000 a unit, and for the one in Redmond, it's about 42,000, the local. And, but yet, the total public dollars from the county, and Arch, and the State Trust Fund are almost identical in the two projects. So in that one, there's a higher proportion of city resources going in, but the total amount of public dollars going in is very, very comparable in those two projects. So, so now, looking at it from the point of view of what Spectrum is agreeing, you know, long-term affordability for a 12-year property tax exemption, so this is a summary of that kind of analysis we did. So this is the one that's somewhat similar to what we were showing to some of you last week. What we did is, we assume a certain amount of assessed value per, and this is just for the Spectrum piece, so it's the 200 units, and we looked at what the total property tax savings for that property would be annually, that's 529,000, and then we had... And then we had to present value that, because it's over time. And, then we did some funny little math to sort of figure out how much per affordable unit per month in rent are you, are they, for every affordable unit they're providing, how much does that property tax equal in terms of rent? And that's eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars a month. So when I try to translate it to those affordable units, you're basically giving them eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars a month. Okay? So the flip is, now, if we ask for, and here, their property's going to do ten percent and eighty percent of median, what is the impact for them of having, providing that? And it's over seven-hundred dollars a month. So the ratio there is like one, under one point two. So it's that slight positive, that what you are getting, but you're also getting long-term affordability for that, you're getting that forever. We feel that, asking for ten percent in that project to receive that exemption, because of how high market rents are right now for new property, and so they're giving up a lot of rental income, we feel that they are giving up about seven-hundred dollars a month in rent for each of those units, and for an exchange for something that's worth about just over eight-hundred dollars a month. Okay? So that sort of keeps it in that ratio that we typically are designing these types of programs, too. So we feel that what they're offering is a, even as a standalone, you know, without all the packaging, but as a standalone, is a reasonable return or investment for the city, for that provision of the program. And then, this is just our effort to try to understand, how much are your property taxes potentially being impacted relative to what you currently collect by exempting this property? So, alls we're doing here is, we're trying to figure out, the top section is how much you get currently in property taxes, how much is total, but then the ten million is about how much comes to the city of Issaquah from property taxes. Then, we were told by the finance department that they typically get about a three percent from new, and if you take your existing tax base, that what you get from new construction's about three percent. So we could do the math on that, and that says normally you would get about another three-hundred thousand dollars a year from new. Then we look at this, this property, and we're saying it's being exempted, the city's share of what's being exempted is about sixty thousand a year. So that shows you that is about twenty percent of what you might typically see, in budgeting purposes, for one, you know, for that one year. Or if you look at your entire tax base, it's about point six percent. So this is just to give you some relative scale of, for this property, offering a property tax exemption. And I think, now we're to your, back to Jen and other, all questions, other questions.
Hey Jen, so, I'm still struggling with, this is a complicated subject, and it would be nice to have a successful project where we pilot using MFT without making this lifelong commitment to it. So I'm wondering, what's the downside of writing an ordinance that uses the proposal as a basis for it? And then if the council or future councils go, well, this was a great tool and a great success, then using it with the lower levels that were proposed in this one? Why, what would be the downside of that?
So I think, as Arthur mentioned, the, so, the RTA, the residential targeted area, which we're defining as this one lot, or the one parcel, we define what that affordability is. So, for, if we do expand in the future, we can change that affordability. So there's not much, I don't think, risk of saying, oh, we've committed forever to this five and fifteen percent. Because again, in the Redmond and Bellevue and other locations, they talk about different affordability levels in different areas. So that's ten, you know, is, is normal. I don't know, in the, Arthur, in the analysis that you've done, looking at the affordability requirements for the MFT and such, if there's any downside to putting the entire, what we're getting as far as affordable units? But as far as writing the ordinance and moving forward, I don't see a downside from that.
I think, and probably be how we'll speak to this, my guess would be, I'm a private, because we went through this in Kirkland, to some degree. And, Spectrum is going to be privately financed, and they are going to be going to funders and financiers, and they're saying, I'm providing ten percent of my property, and they're the ones going to have the most explicit covenant related to them. If you all of a sudden say this requirement that's one hundred and fifty units, they are joined at the hip, that if the Housing Authority does anything wrong or has any issues, they get dragged into that issue. Versus, by doing sort of what you have here, it's a more clear-cut, this is what we're giving, and it doesn't complicate a very complex, you know, when they're trying to go to private investors and show what they're doing. So that's one element to it. So that might be one issue, is it might complicate them trying to convince lenders, well, I only have to do this many, and they're doing that many, and don't worry about it, they'll all be okay. So that would probably be...
Thanks.
So, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I'm going to ask you to go back to the affordability overview slide, right there.
That one?
And, and it's going to be a rehash. So, the proposed land use, the inclusionary, that's, you used some numbers that you threw at the committee last week, twelve and a half percent, sixty percent AMI. Now you're proposing ordinance for this MFT at these levels for a single prop, we're talking about a single property.
Uh huh.
I guess what I'm missing is, and so that would be, is that considered, so I'm just looking at that MFT column, that's considered incentive for the builder to do these additional units at those levels of affordability? So why would they?
Yes.
Why would they go all the way up to one hundred and five additional ones? What incentive are we creating?
So part...
Those additional one hundred and five?
So part of the additional one oh five is what we mentioned before about the city investments, so the fee waivers and other things. This is, again, a project that we know that has different sources of funding that are helping to, to pay for that affordability as well. The MFT is not, I don't believe, saying, okay, unless we change it, you have to provide this hundred and five, so that incentive isn't connected to that. But Arthur may answer this differently.
King County TOD. You wanted, you pitched to get the King County TOD set aside for the I-90 corridor, this is helping you implement it. So the package overall is, and it's, to some degree, it's almost a little bit backwards, often, like when you did the YWCA Family Village, you had the land put together, you had the fee waivers all put together, then you found a developer, and then they went and found the other pieces. Here, it's like you started with the other pieces, and you're filling in what you typically might have done if you had the time and the luxury to do it in a little bit different order. But, it's, it's basically, this was your ability to leverage, because the county wants you to leverage, they don't want to pay for a hundred percent. So it's ways for you to bring value, to get the county to be willing to fund, you know, whatever, you know, their, to put their ten million in. How do you leverage that investment? And so you're doing it not with cash, which is what Kirk Redmond's doing, you're leveraging it with MFT and things like that.
Okay, so, so let me break it down one more time. So, possibly through the land use, we would get the forty-four, we haven't done that officially yet.
Right.
And then, in order to get, and then, if we do the ordinance on MFT, the numbers that you provide, that, you know, those twenty-seven units make sense, because basically, the ratio of the value of the property tax exemption to the reduced rent for affordable is about one hundred and seventeen percent. So you think, okay, that makes sense. There's some.
Right.
Incentive there. And then, but then, the far, the one hundred and five, that's a completely, that has nothing to do with MFT, bottom line.
So, and that's why I'm saying this is like, almost a little bit backwards. I think you asked the question earlier about, oh, what's going on with the state, the federal legislation and bonds being available? If they're not available, this whole project goes away. So, so to say, I showed you this to sort of document that there's justifiable value in this one hundred and fifty-five units, how you can, all these different pieces, how they are being, you can justify each of them being part of this deal from an economic point of view. However, they're all intertwined. The pieces are, in the end, this is a hundred, this, this three-hundred-and-fifty-five unit project has private and the Housing Authority, and all of these pieces, all of them are needed to make the overall puzzle work. We just wanted to make sure that when you piece that puzzle together, it's a reason, it's defensible that the pieces that they asked for are defensible. So, to say that we're getting this from that, no, you're, you lose the bonds, and you lose, you lose the TOD, you lose the bonds, you lose the whole thing, and the whole structure falls apart.
Yeah, I get that, what you just clarified for me, and I was confused earlier, even when I was looking at it earlier. Again, with that rightmost column, I mean, this is a conversation about MFT.
Right.
And, and, and that's it. This, this MFT proposal in front of us is what's going to get us those twenty-seven, stop. But, oh, by the way, the full context of the project is all of these, and there's this other, public benefit for these other one hundred and five.
Uh huh.
Next steps, before we go to public comment?
Um, yeah, you may go to the next step.
Yeah, there's one last slide.
Yep, yep. So, before we go to public comment, so we will be back here tomorrow night at services, so if there's additional information that you want us to sleuth out, or go into more depth, we will do that. And then, back on December fourth for the public hearing about the RTA, and then further discussion to hopefully adopt the ordinance.
We have folks here who would like to make comments?
This is one of the few places in Issaquah that has power on, just so you know.
Lucky us.
Yeah, all, most of Issaquah's dark, all those streetlights are either off or blinking. So it's hard to sit back there and listen to you all talk about this. Anyway...
Well, can you, we, we know who you are, but...
Yes, I'm Hal Ferris with Spectrum Development Solutions, sorry. I've been using the multifamily property tax exemption since it was first adopted. My first project was Wadjima Village in the International District, in which we built and opened in nineteen ninety, no, it was in two thousand. Clarification, that was originally the state, the state passed this program, this is a state-initiated program, they originally allowed, it was always ten-year property tax exemption, and there was no affordability requirement at all. It was an economic development tool, is what it was used for, to make things happen. They found that in some cities, Seattle, on their own, they adopted an affordability requirement to use it, because they had a lot of activity going on already. Other cities like Tacoma just used it to create housing, because it was all rel, already relatively affordable in Tacoma. So then, the state then realized that there was a different way to look at it, so they then, a few years later, split it so that you could get an eight-year exemption without an affordability requirement, or you could get a twelve-year exemption, this is what the state allows, if you put an affordability on it. And that affordability required is a minimum that twenty percent of the units were affordable to at least eighty percent, not more than eighty percent of average median income. One of the areas that you differ is something to think about for future tax exemptions, is that, in Seattle, when they first adopted it at eighty percent, all they got were little units, studios and one-bedrooms, because the biggest income difference, rental, is in the larger units. So you could get the exemption and just build little units. So they then said, which in some cities have adopted, say you have to have a minimum number of two bedrooms to get this program, or, they'll say, in, as Seattle does, the studios are at sixty-five percent of average median, one-bedrooms are at seventy-five percent, and two-bedrooms are at eighty. And that then motivates the people to build a mix of, range of units, because they wanted the family units. Yours ordinance doesn't always do that. One thing that's good to do is compared to the suggestion that you model your ordinance after what we're proposing, is, when we use this program, the lenders are used to seeing it in a form that's somewhat consistent from city to city. And if you were to deviate significantly for that, it would cause a reaction to them, and it would impair our ability to get it financed. So trying to stay within the context of what the staff is suggesting is good. We will enter into a development agreement with the city that will bind us and the Housing Authority to those greater numbers of affordability. So you will still have that certainty and security there. And it's better to keep incentive zoning, or inclusionary zoning, work as a zoning tool that's with a percentage that's similar to what, to have the MFT work in a context that's similar to what we're using, and to have then the, this greater number of affordability, which is, this is really off the chart. And it is a hundred percent because of the TOD grant, or loan program, is what is making those big numbers work. And as a matter of fact, when we first responded to the proposal, we had fewer units and fewer affordable units. We increased those, because we were trying to make the Housing Authority's application more competitive, to get, lower our cost, still the same ten million, but getting more affordable units, and therefore lowering the amount that we were asking per unit for the County Housing Authority units. So that was something we did, the city benefits, because you're getting even more affordable units. We made our, our layout more efficient, we utilized the podium more efficiently to get more units on there, to increase the number of affordable units that the city was going to achieve. So that was something that we, there are other areas, the life, the affordability for the life of the project is, is a challenge, I've never had that before. A life is a long time. It could create some unusual consequences, are you going to be motivated to tear down the building when it gets later in its years? Then, if you had a limit like fifty years, I mean, would I want to get rid of it and tear it down, because I have to keep it affordable as long as it's there? So, that isn't passed, except for some of the cities on the east side, it's not otherwise a requirement for the life of the project. So those are the major, I did some quick math, by the way, the slide you showed up there, the Century Link, we're putting them onto a site that is currently not paying taxes, so you will still get the tax revenue, the Century Link is currently paying. So the amount that we're paying on your land will be in addition to what you're getting, every bit of it. So the, the investment from the city is of something just less than three million dollars, around three million, including the fee. And, and we, on the, the affordable, the market rate side, we still pay over a million and a half dollars in fees, development fees, impact fees, permit fees. We pay property taxes between years one and twelve, which total nine-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars, and over fifty years, we'll pay over twenty-five million dollars in property taxes, which will be close to twenty-eight million dollars in revenue that you're not getting now, that you are investing three million dollars, and you get back twenty-eight million dollars. So, from an investment standpoint, it's a pretty good investment. Thanks.
Thanks, Hal. Anybody else like to make public comment? No? Last call? Okay.
Ask us questions?
Sure.
So this now goes to Safety and Services this week?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yes. So is it appropriate, then, maybe to ask some questions that Safety and Services can deal with tomorrow? So the two things that I heard that I thought were intriguing is, I think it'd be good to have a robust discussion about forever and fifty years, and understand the pluses and minus. And, your earlier point about the range of unit sizes, that should be clearly specified in our ordinance, too. So those are the only two concerns. And now, after both Arthur and Hal have spoken, I think I completely understand why now the ordinance is written the way it is, I like that. But I would like you guys to dig in more to that, understand, make sure we've got those two bases covered.
I agree, and Hal had some comments about how this inadvertently sometimes creates the wrong incentives, and I want to make sure.
We don't do the wrong incentives.
How those inadvertent, we don't fall into the law of unintended consequences. And how we have it written.
Any other feedback? Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes.
Jen, thanks, Arthur. Great presentation. Thorough, very thorough. And the last item on our agenda is, the topic is anticipated vacancy of Council position number three recruitment timeline. And, leadership requested that this be added to tonight, so that, I think there was some interest in getting a process going, so that seat will be vacant the least amount of time possible. So that's why it's on here tonight, for early discussion. Hi, Tina.
Hi, thank you. Tina Eggers, City Clerk, and, again, this is anticipation of preparing an agenda bill for your next council meeting. There's a memo in your packet, I won't read it, but I will just briefly indicate that talks about the vacancy that would be... talks about the vacancy that would become open January 1 of 2018, that there's 90 days for the council to make an appointment of a qualified person. That person would be at least 18 years or older, a registered voter, and have one-year residency within our city limits. And that this term, once appointed, would be valid through November of 2019, and the remainder of the term would be passed on to the individual that would be elected into that seat. So, there's a proposed timeline in front of you, I do have that on the next slide. What we did was, we took the sort of past practice and the past application and questions, we put together a timeline that anticipated appointment and oath, so I'd like to get some clarification on that as well, and then, see if we're in alignment on next steps with November 20th. So, the timeline that was prepared, if you're able to approve a timeline on the 20th, we could start recruitment almost immediately, we could extend that through January 9th. If you're looking for applicants to be able to present at a January meeting, it's proposed for January 16th, it's a Tuesday due to the holiday. And you could recess into executive session to discuss the qualifications of the candidates, but you couldn't discuss or make decisions beyond that aspect. You could make an appointment as early as that evening if you wanted to, you could delay and wait until the 5th, if you'd like more time to look at the qualifications. And if you choose, you could also conduct the oath of office that evening. Depending on the number of applicants on the, and depending on what meeting you'd like to have the applicants present, you may want to start your meeting earlier. In the past, we've allowed about 10 minutes per applicant. That could be a long evening, if you have great interest in outpour. This isn't intended to read in detail, it's simply just a snapshot of what the application looks like, and the questions. I could, if you want, delve into the questions, if you'd like to edit those. Otherwise, I'm just here to figure out what the consensus is and next steps, and see what kind of an agenda bill I can put together for you.
Okay. So, I think we could just sort of generally go down a list of basic questions, and maybe get some feedback to Tina. The first is, is there general consensus to start the process, the application announcement process soon? So, what, so, opening potentially November 22nd, and then, closing January 9th? I'm seeing head nods, okay. Presentation is January 16th? And then, council votes to fill it on January 16th or February 5th?
Yeah, I think we should be explicit about February 5th. I think in the past, we've always talked about, you know, we might just do it on that same day, and then, we never do. And we've done it like, what, four times since I've been on council?
Okay.
Nice suggestion.
Having been an interviewee before, I wondered why we needed the time, but if your experience is that it's too hard to listen to it all, go into executive session, come out, that's fine.
I personally, I have five times have done this?
Oh, my God.
Four or five times. Yeah, I think it's too soon, I think you need to steep on it a little bit. Sometimes I like to go back and look over the material, you know, look over how they presented, and I think it's, I personally, I like to measure twice and cut once.
Okay.
But, I mean, yeah, I'm 1 of 7. Or 6.
I could live with that, I think the, is that, there's a three-week difference there? Almost three weeks? So, it's another three weeks without a seat, I don't know how much we're going to be doing towards the end of January, but, it feels super strong the other way.
And I think this is also very fast compared to some of the previous efforts, like, I think this is a nice, quick, lean schedule. I think sometimes in the past, we've gone longer in putting these together.
I can live with either date. It is a three-week delay, but the fact of it, they'd be, if you did them on the, pour them in on the 16th, they really wouldn't do anything until the 5th anyway, so, but that, either way, works for me, I'm okay with...
Well, they're sworn in immediately, so, they sit up immediately.
Right.
So, they're going to be doing just as much on the 5th.
Consent agenda.
There would be, yeah, the council meeting on the 16th, and then, there's a COW meeting, so they would, they'd have two meetings, yeah, they would miss.
So, Paul?
When we've done this in the past, the one feeling I've been left with, the last few in particular, or at least the thought was in my mind, is, boy, wouldn't it have been great to have like a meet and greet as well, where in a less formal way, we get a chance to kind of mingle with the candidates and talk in a less formal way, to get to know the potential person a little bit better. We were all free, I guess, on our own individually to meet with whomever applies, I don't know that there's anything against that, but I just wanted to throw that out for discussion, if that's something in the process we might be entertaining.
If there is a COW meeting in between the 16th and the 5th, we could, just another idea to toss it back, rather than scheduling a special meet and greet meeting, we could come an hour early or something and mingle.
What would the date on that be?
January 23rd.
I mean, sounds good to me.
January 23rd.
We can work out the details of the meet and, Paula?
Yeah, I really like that idea.
I like that idea a lot.
So, pre, COW, meet and greet. Public meeting, so other people can, the public can come, and, okay? So, the other, so, the only other topic that I had to ask about is, I think there's probably interest in the notion that the questions that we ask are maybe tired questions that we've asked many times before. And so, I don't know that, so, my suggestion was maybe we, council members, think about those questions, and submit them, your ideas for questions to Tina in advance of the next meeting, to be included in the packet, which, the deadline for that would be Wednesday prior to the meeting? So, that's next Wednesday?
No, it would be this week.
This Wednesday, yeah. So, a couple days to think about questions, maybe different questions?
I guess it depends on which meeting you'd want to talk about the questions at. So, if you wanted to do it at a late, because I don't think you give the questions out once you open up the session, do you? Are these verbal, or are these written answers that come back?
We provide instructions, we provide the questions in advance.
With the announcement.
It's, has been intended for them to incorporate that into their presentations.
Yeah, I was just mentioning, in case, two days was too short for you guys to try and turn it around, so you might have a little more time if you had it.
So, if it's not included in the packet, then the other option was to send it to the council via Tina, but making sure we get that information, the questions, other proposed questions, in time for council members to think about them before the meeting. So, the day of is not generally a great idea, because some of us don't get to last-minute emails before council. So, that was my thought. If you want to think of other questions, certainly can do that, and then, get them back to the council via Tina, think about that. We want different questions. Anybody have any ideas or comments, or is that okay or not? Okay? Okay. So...
You know, tired is one way to describe these questions, classic would be another way to describe these questions. I mean, I actually like that, I like having a consistent set of questions, because it actually allows me to compare new candidates to candidates that have come to us in the past, right? Which is, for me personally, I think has some value, but I'm fine either way. If people want to come up with a bunch of questions, that's fine, but I'm fine with the ones that...
So, I was actually carrying forward kind of a request from another council member, wasn't necessarily advocating one way or the other.
All right.
I'm trying to be a good pres.
So, if you're anticipating review of questions, then I hear this being a regular business item on the 20th.
Yes, yeah, I think we want that for visibility as well.
All right.
Okay. Anything else on the vacancy procedure? Tina, do you need anything else from us on that?
I think, I mean, unless there were changes to our actual process, I think I heard you can formulate the A, B.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? We don't have a good of the order on here tonight, but is there anything else for good of the order?
I wanted to throw one thing out there for good of the order. Earlier this evening, we heard about likelihood of maybe getting funding from PSRC for the design of the Newport Way, and if any of you were wondering, that actually was using the criteria that was developed, because I'm on that project selection task force right now, we had nothing to do with that. Where it's actually about the selections that are going to be starting to be made next year and the year after, for beginning in the year 2020 and 2021. So, everything, there's always this big lag, so it was actually two years ago, when a project selection task force defined the policies to help select projects, and that's what this Newport Way project is falling under. Just in case anybody was wondering, I'm sure you all were.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there isn't anything else, then we're adjourned.